Yes, I'll take bear it says.
May it please the board, I appear with my learned friend, Mr Rosen, to assist the inquiry.
Yes.
If the board pleases, I appear with my learned friend, Mr Tank Burns, for the State of Victoria.
Yes.
We believe in the board, I appear on behalf of GDF Sewers Australia, Inji, together with my learned friends, Miss Rachel Boyle and Sharon Butcher.
Mr Edman.
I appear with Latrobe City Council, Mr Tom McQualter.
So, your name is?
Tom McQualter.
Okay, thank you, Mr Walter. Now, there is a matter of applications for leave to appear. Mr Verl.
Thank you, board. My name is Dr Nicholas Abely, from Environment Victoria. Thank you for the opportunity to make a brief formal submission in support of our written application for leave to appear. I appreciate the inquiry has tight deadlines, so I could be pretty short and won't reiterate everything that's in the written submission. I just wanted to reiterate two points today. We only request leave to appear as it relates to mine rehabilitation. And secondly, as the inquiry will have noted from our detailed written submission, we've been a leading public representative, leading representative of the public interest on mine management issues in Victoria for many years. This role is, in addition to what we've mentioned in our written application, this role is further evidenced by our position on the Advisory Committee for the Gibbsland Sustainable Water Strategy, which includes looking at how mines affect the water table. We've been a key stakeholder and involved in detailed consultation with mine failures at the Yalorn Mine. We've been made submissions and given evidence to a parliamentary inquiry into greenfields mineral exploration a couple of years ago, and as well as making submissions to various mine environmental effects statement processes, including the expansion of Hazelwood in 2006.
I take it that you're content that if you are informed as to matters that relate to environmental issues, that that is the occasion when you are, would want to appear?
Absolutely, yes.
And you're happy to liaise with Miss Richards in relation to those aspects?
Absolutely. I mean, we consider that mine rehabilitation is an environmental issue.
Yes, well, there may be, there may be other, it may arise out of witnesses who give evidence in relation to other matters, but their evidence is likely to be maybe incidental to environmental matters. Do you contemplate that you'd be spending the whole of the time here or simply to deal with those matters? And they clearly will be matters, including some expert evidence given in relation to, specifically, environmental matters.
Yeah, mine are saying that most of those will going to be dealt with in the second week of the inquiry.
Yeah, well, that's substantially right. Miss Richards, do you want to say anything specifically?
Members of the board, the issue of rehabilitation will be dealt with discreetly in the third week of the inquiry, under the topic of mitigation and prevention. There are environmental issues that we will explore next week, but they relate mainly to air quality. As I understand, Environment Victoria's application focuses on the issue of rehabilitation, and if leave were to be granted, its submissions should be limited to the issue of rehabilitation in this third week.
Mr Verl, you contend with that course being followed?
Just fine then.
It's appropriate in those circumstances that we do grant leave in a limited way. Yes, same as well.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
I now propose to make a short opening statement, then call upon Miss Richards, unless there's any other preliminary matter. Welcome to a very special day, first day of public hearings of the Hazelwood Mine Fire Inquiry. What can you, present in this auditorium, expect from today? What can the wider public expect? We hope to have an open, public exposure of many things. A week ago, we were troubled about the skimpiness of information provided by the principal agencies. In the past week, we have been swamped. Over the next three weeks, we want you and the public generally to have presented in open forum the most important parts of what is now a mass of material. In our consultations over the last six weeks, we have focused on three questions about the disastrous mine fires of the February the 9th last. What caused them? What are the health and environmental implications now and in the future for the locals, and particularly the children and younger people? And what can be done to prevent a disaster like this from happening again? We have deadlines to meet. We must limit the issues that we can address and the depth of treatment of even those issues. My colleagues and I have chosen to each focus more strongly on different issues. For me, the focus will be on the fires and firefighters, preparation and response. For Professor John Catford, on the health and wellbeing of the community and the firefighters, and the environmental and communication issues. For Miss Sonia Petering, on the assessment of the adequacy of the regulatory regime. John will not be able to sit on every day of the hearings. When not present, he will be keeping up to date on what takes place here. The evidence will be presented through council assisting Miss Richards and Mr Rosen, and we will be listening over the next three weeks for the final week for submissions. The past six weeks have seen us listen to over 250 participants at 10 community consultations in Morewell, Moi, Churchill and Terelden. Those consultations provided us with invaluable information. We have also received and read hundreds of written submissions, many with extremely helpful guidance. We place great emphasis on openness. Our website reflects that. We encourage all to go to our website to look at three things. One, the reports on the community consultations. Two, the submissions in which the media has already located several news stories. Three, as from tomorrow, the statements of witnesses and a transcript of their testimony. Today, we start the most formal process of the inquiry, the public hearings. During these hearings, we will hear evidence from firefighters, from mine workers, from experts in many fields, from community members. We plan to listen to all of them with open minds. Miss Richards.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, the abundant brown coal of the Latrobe Valley is key to Victoria's economic prosperity. It's a low-cost source of electricity that powers our industry and heats and lights our homes. While all of Victoria benefits from this ready source of energy for electricity generation here in the Latrobe Valley, there are some burdens associated with coal mining and power generation. These burdens have fallen disproportionately on those who live and work in the Latrobe Valley. The township of Yalorn was eloquently described by Justice Streton in his report on the February 1944 fires in the Yalorn Open Cut Mine. He said, "It's a pleasant place and an asset of very great value, worthy of special fire protection by the commission under whose sole management it lies." Here indeed, the townsman enjoys all that the heart of man may desire, except freedom, fresh air and independence. He lives his life on a great many days in a fine rain of abrasive coal particles against which closed doors and windows offer no defence. Much has changed in the last 70 years, including the advent of local democracy in the Latrobe Valley and greatly reduced divisions from industry, but this description from 70 years ago will probably resonate with people who lived and worked in the Latrobe Valley, especially in Morewell during February and March this year. The township of Yalorn is no longer. It was removed to make way for an extension to the Yalorn Open Cut Mine, and by the early 1980s had all but disappeared. Morewell itself might have suffered a similar fate. In 1947, the State Electricity Commission of Victoria proposed a large new open cut mine to the south of Morewell, which would have seen the town removed to a proposed new Morewell. This proposal was strongly opposed by the Shire of Morewell and was rejected by the Premier. At the same time, approval was given for the development of what is now the Hazelwood Coal Mine, directly to the south of the existing town. For reasons that are not known, there was no provision for a buffer zone between the mine and the town, and since the development of the mine began in the late 1950s, residents of the southern parts of Morewell have lived cheek by jowl with an open cut coal mine. There is, at the end of Maryvale, present an early learning centre with a fine view over the freeway into the northern batters of the mine. The Latrobe Valley community was especially hard hit in the mid-1990s by the disaggregation of the SEC and the privatisation of the electricity industry. Over time, the number of people working in coal mining and power generation and distribution fell by thousands. Unsurprisingly, unemployment rates in the valley rose during this period to well above the national average. By most conventional measures, the Latrobe Valley community is less prosperous and less healthy than the rest of Victoria, even though the key to Victoria's economic wealth is here. Median household incomes are significantly lower here than for the whole of Victoria, and there is a much higher proportion of low-income households in the Latrobe Valley than in Victoria at large. Morewell has an aging population, and the percentage of people living here who need assistance due to a disability is twice the rate for the rest of Victoria. Health outcomes are markedly worse in the Latrobe Valley. Life expectancies are significantly shorter than the state average, and there are higher rates of diseases, including cancer, cardiovascular disease and asthma. The community of the Latrobe Valley has been particularly hard hit or particularly affected by asbestos-related disease. There would be few long-term residents who do not know someone who has suffered or died from a lung disease caused by inhalation decades earlier of apparently harmless asbestos dust. For all of this, the Latrobe Valley is a proud, strong and resilient community. It has a vibrant, well-established community network and a large cohort of volunteers. These aspects of the community were on display this year during the mine fire. They continue to be on display as the community, local business and local government work to clean up and recover from the fire's effects. Also on display, very clearly during the board's consultation process, has been the community's desire for information and accountability about the mine fire. The Latrobe Valley is located in a notoriously bushfire-prone region. There are fires in the area every summer. Sometimes, these fires are catastrophic. Five years ago, on Black Saturday in 2006, the Churchill Fire claimed 11 lives, injured 35 others and destroyed 145 houses. At one stage, it was feared that the fire threatened the Loyang Open Cut Coal Mine. On the same day, fires were also burning at Delburn and Bunyip, not far away. It's not uncommon for there to be multiple significant fires burning in the region at the same time. Fire is a commonplace event in an open cut coal mine. The first known fire in an open cut mine in the Latrobe Valley was in 1896. Justice Streton observed in his 1944 report on the Yalorn Open Cut Fire that fire is an almost unavoidable concomitant of brown coal open cut mining. That fire was ignited by a bushfire that began outside the mine. Since 1944, the operators of the Hazelwood Mine have experienced numerous fires, most of them small, some of them large. There are approximately 100 small fires at the Hazelwood Mine each year, usually in the working part of the mine. Measures are in place so that these fires can be put out quickly and do not spread. In 1977, there was a significant fire in the mine ignited from a vehicle exhaust. It burned for three days and prompted a review by the SEC of its fire protection measures. From that review came the Latrobe Valley Open Cut Mines Protection Policy that was developed as a result of the lessons learned from the 1977 fire. The SEC had a dedicated mine fire service in place, which endured until the SEC was broken up in preparation for privatisation in the 1990s. While the Hazelwood Mine, which was for many years referred to as the Morewell Open Cut, while it was first developed and for many years operated by the SECV, since September 1996, it has been privately owned and operated by the Hazelwood Power Partnership. Since September 1996, the licensee for the mining licence, Mining License 5004, has been the Hazelwood Power Corporation Limited, and that company is owned by the Hazelwood Power Partnership. Through a complex ownership structure, the Hazelwood Power Partnership is ultimately owned through various companies, including the International Power Australia Holdings Proprietary Limited by GDF Sewers SA as to 72% and by Mitsurian Company Limited as to 28%. GDF Sewers Hazelwood is the custodian of an important state asset in the Hazelwood Mine and the operator of an essential industry in the power station that generates 25% of Victoria's electricity. It's a major employer and contributor to the Latrobe Valley's economy. It's also a neighbour to those who live on the southern side of Morewell. There've been several significant fires at the Hazelwood Mine since it was privatised. In the last decade, there were fires in December 2005, October 2006, September 2008, and most recently in January 2012. These were all ignited from sources inside the mine. The 2005 and 2008 fires from a hotspot that, in the worked-out batters of the mine, and the 2006 and 2012 fires from a hot idler on a conveyor belt. Each of these fires was a subject of review, which made recommendations for improved fire prevention and response. In light of experience, Hazelwood has updated what was the Latrobe Valley Fire Protection Policy to what is now the Mine Fire Policy and Code of Practice, which is still substantially based on the policy that was developed by the SEC in the 1980s. The risk of fire in the Latrobe Valley's open cut coal mines has been squarely recognised for decades by mine operators, by the fire services, by regulators at state, municipal and regional emergency management planning. And yet, on the 9th of February this year, a fire ignited in the worked-out batters of the Hazelwood Mine and quickly burned out of control. The fire took six weeks to put out. It could have taken much longer but for the tremendous effort of more than 7,000 people who worked long and hard in difficult conditions to suppress the fire. During those six weeks, people who live and work in the Latrobe Valley, particularly in Morewell, had to endure the smoke and ash from the fire. To quote again from Justice Streton's 1944 report, "The fact that on the 14th of February last, a great fire did develop in the open cut, and that strenuous and prolonged efforts were necessary to be expended before it was extinguished, points strongly to the fact that the protective measures which had been previously taken were not reasonably adequate." Seventy years later, the occurrence of the worst open cut coal mine fire in Victoria's history raises similar questions, which are posed in the Board of Inquiry's terms of reference. During the public hearings over the next few weeks, the board will be exploring these questions with a wide range of witnesses. Evidence will be given by witnesses from Victorian Government agencies, including the Fire Services, the Mine Regulator, the Environment Protection Authority and the Department of Health. Evidence will also be given by GDF Sewers personnel and by employees of the Latrobe City Council. In addition, the board has engaged several experts to provide it with expert opinion on subjects as diverse as the environmental and health effects of the fires, communications and community engagement, mine safety and bushfire risk. The board will also hear from a number of community witnesses, people who live and work in Morewell and elsewhere in the Latrobe Valley, who will give a first-hand account of their experiences of the mine fires. During each week of the hearings, the evidence will address a different theme. In this first week of the hearing, the evidence will be directed to the origin of and the response to the fires in the mine. How did the fires in the mine start? How did they become so widespread within the mine? What was the initial response to the fires, first by the mine operator and then by the fire services? What worked and what did not work in the effort to suppress the fires? Are the fires out? And most importantly, what are the lessons that can be learned for the future? In a short time, the board will commence hearing evidence from the first witness, Fire Services Commissioner Craig Lapsley. He will give a detailed account of statewide preparations for the extreme fire weather forecast for the 9th of February, the ignition and spread of fires around Morewell leading up to and on the 9th of February, and the fire services' evolving response to the mine fire. The next witness today will be Bill Brown, a community witness who worked for many years in the mine fire service at Hazelwood and elsewhere. The evidence today will conclude with a presentation of a Phoenix computer simulation of the probable spread of the Herne's Oak Fire and the Drifield Fire on the 9th of February. Later this week, evidence will be called from the officer overseeing the Victoria Police investigation of the Herne's Oak and Drifield Fires, and a number of GDF Sewers employees who were involved in responding to the fires in the mine on the 9th of February and afterwards. Evidence will also be called from fire service employees who were responsible for local incident control over the duration of the fire, and on Friday, we propose to explore the discrete issue of the safety of firefighters responding to the fire at the mine. Unfortunately, the evidence this week may be a little disjointed. Statements from GDF Sewers personnel and the successive incident controllers were requested at the beginning of the month on the 1st of May, and the first of these statements was not received by the board until Tuesday last week. The last is yet to be provided. As the witness statements became available to the board last week, we found that the information provided in them was not complete and did not fully address the questions that the board had posed. And as a result, the board has issued several summonses for witnesses to give evidence this week. We will do our best to stitch up the gaps between the evidence, but it may be that the flow of the evidence this week is not all it could have been. The second week of the hearings will focus on the environmental and health effects of the mine fire. Evidence called next week will also address relief and recovery arrangements and communications and community engagement. The witnesses to be called next week will include witnesses from the Environment Protection Authority, the Department of Health and the Latrobe City Council. The board will have the assistance of independent expert evidence from the following witnesses. First, Claire Richardson, an environmental scientist of Air Noise Environment; Professor Donald Campbell, a respiratory physician; and two communications experts, Professor Jim McNamara of University of Technology Sydney and Lachlan Drummond of Red Handed. Witnesses will also be called from the Department of Human Services and GDF Sewers in relation to relief and recovery assistance provided during and after the fire, including with cleaning up the soot and ash. During next week also, we will generally call a community witness each day. The third week of the hearings, commencing on Tuesday 10th of June, will address questions of mitigation and prevention. There's no doubt that the risk of fire in the mine was identified, and there are a number of regulatory schemes within which this risk is managed. Mine regulation, occupational health and safety, emergency management, municipal fire prevention and land use planning. The questions that will be explored during the last week of evidence include whether the measures identified to control the fire risk were adequate, whether the measures identified were in fact implemented, and what further measures should be taken in future in light of the lessons to be learned from this year's experience. It's during this week that the evidence will explore the rehabilitation of the mine and whether it's a feasible fire prevention measure for the future. Evidence will be called from the Mine Regulator, which is now known as the Earth and Energy Resources Division of the Department of State Development, Business and Innovation; also the Victorian Work Cover Authority, Latrobe City and GDF Sewers. The board will also have the assistance of expert evidence from Professor David Cliff and experienced, and I beg your pardon. The board will have expert evidence from a mine safety engineer, Professor David Cliff, and also an experienced bushfire risk consultant, Rod Inkold. We propose to conclude the evidence by recalling the Fire Services Commissioner, Mr Lapsley, both wearing his Fire Services Commissioner hat and his future hat as the first emergency management commissioner in Victoria, to address the existing fire risk management arrangements and the scope for improving them in the future. I'll call the first witness, Mr Lapsley.
Please state your full name. Please raise the Bible if anyone needs it from me. I swear by the mighty God that the evidence I show you to be in the inquiry will be the truth, the whole truth and all that.
Good morning, Mr Lapsley, welcome.
Thank you.
To begin proceedings today, can you please state your full name and your position and your professional address?
Craig Lapsley, Fire Services Commissioner, located at Level 26 and 121 Exhibition District.
And Mr Lapsley, you have provided a statement to the board dated the 20th of May 2014.
Yes, I have.
It's a statement of some 229 paragraphs.
Correct.
On my count, 38 attachments.
Yes.
Are you familiar with the statement?
I am.
You've reread it recently?
Yes, I have.
Are there any corrections? Are there any corrections that you wish to make?
No, there is not.
Is your statement true and correct?
It is.
Perhaps I could tender that as first exhibit?
Yes, well, it will be exhibit one, and we'll just proceed from there.
Now, Mr. Lapsley, I'd like to start by asking you about the responsibilities of your current role and how it evolved. These are matters that you do cover in the statement, but I'd just ask you to tell us about them.
In a short history, it goes back that this is a new role as a result of Bushfire Royal Commission of two thousand and nine. It was established in two thousand and ten with a piece of legislation called the Fire Service Commissioners Act of two thousand and ten, and I was appointed to that position and took up the position in October, but officially took up the legislative responsibilities on the first of December, two thousand and ten. The legislation is focused on reform of the fire services. And when I say reform of the fire services, that's CFA, MFB and the Department of Environment and Prime Industries, then known as DSC but now known as DEPI, and through an arrangement, S E S also, although not covered by the legislation, participate in the reform programme, seeing that they have alignment. From that, it also has responsibilities to be the senior operational firefighter in the state, and I perform the role as state controller for major fires. It also reaches in to ensure, for the first time, that we've got legislation that sees the need to issue information and warnings to communities. That is then delegated to the agency chiefs and incident controllers, and it goes on to ensure that we've got appropriate standards in place for incident management and other practices that the fire services need to carry out.
And your own background before you came to your current role, for many years you were involved in an operational or a range of operational roles within the CFA.
Correct, twenty-six years' service with CFA, completed my service at CFA in two thousand and seven as a deputy chief officer.
And then you spent some time with the Department of Health and Human Services, as it was then?
Yes, that's correct.
In a quite different role.
Yeah, that was a responsibility for, the title was Director of Emergency Management, had a responsibility for the then Relief System of the State Emergency Recovery System. And during my time there, also transferred the relief arrangements from what was being led by S E S and Big Pile across to the recovery part of the emergency management, and extended into responsibilities to ensure that the Department of Human Services, so the then Health and Human Services in the old department, the large department, had appropriate procedures in public health and across the organisation to look at emergency management more broadly.
And you were in that role after the Black Saturday fires in two thousand and nine?
Yes, I was there between two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten, so the Black Saturday fires was in that period.
And you also, before taking up that role, spent some time working in the State Emergency Service?
Yes, for a short period of time. I had the responsibility to be then the acting director, to take the S E S from what was an internal government department to a statutory authority, which meant that we struck legislation to enable the S E S to move to what it is today as a statutory authority.
Now, just looking to the future, you have been appointed but are yet to assume the role of Emergency Management Commissioner. Can you describe for the board what that role involves and how it varies from your current role?
Well, it's a logical next step from what the Fire Service Commissioner has done. Fire has been, well, the Fire Service Commissioner has been focused on fire, obviously, and as I said before, in an informal arrange with S E S, S E S has participated in the reform programme. However, it's obviously the next step in emergency management, and particularly from the flood reviews of two thousand and ten, eleven, that there were issues that weren't just fire alone to be dealt with. The government has supported a new Emergency Management Act, and in doing so establishes an Organisation called Emergency Management Victoria, and the Fire Service Commissioner position will be resolved, dissolved, I suppose, in the sense that it won't be a position that is ongoing. And the next position is the Emergency Management Commissioner, which has responsibilities which is quite different for what we call Class One emergencies and Class Two emergencies, so it picks up those natural disasters, hazmat, and the emergencies that would normally be dealt by CFA, MFB, S E S, DEPI as Class One emergencies, but also extends to have the oversight over human health emergencies, animal health emergencies and other emergencies. But the fundamental steps are a little bit broader than that, because it actually starts to look then at bringing the term consequence management into emergencies and its legislated. And I think traditionally we've seen emergency management being very focused on risk and hazard and not necessarily the consequence of the event. So that's a fundamental step, and also have responsibility end to end. So from the planning, the resilience of what communities and organisations are about, to the response, which is, I suppose, the day that we're being judged on, and then it extends in to have responsibilities for relief and recovery. So it's end to end across all emergencies and ensuring that we're taking the new opportunity to build consequence management. And I should say that Victoria are leading the world in that approach to emergency management, although it's ahead of us, it doesn't start until the first of July and will take some time to build all those mechanisms in, but it is the new generation of emergency management that I think this inquiry will see has some logic, particularly in regards to consequence and what consequence means on the community.
All right, well, with that background, I'd like to now move into the summer that we've just had. And in part B of your statement, you spend some time providing detail about what had been experienced by Victoria and other fire services in particular in the lead-up to the ninth of February this year. The first thing I'd like to take you to is a Bureau of Meteorology Summary of Significant Fire Weather Conditions for the Season, which is referenced at paragraph sixteen of the statement.
Yes.
And which is the first attachment, it'll be behind tab one in that folder in front of you.
Yes.
And can you just provide us with an overview of the fire weather conditions that had been experienced in the lead-up to the ninth of February?
Without going too far back, it is important to get the context of what was being predicted, October, November and December of two thousand and thirteen. And it is summarised in that document, which is headed The Summary of Significant Fire Conditions, on page two, where it talks about maximum temperatures, it talks about rainfall, it talks about days that we are likely to experience, and it goes on to say that what it will mean in fire danger indexes. It's then supported by-
And the pictures provided month by month, so we have pictures for December and then a couple of pages later for January and then for February?
If you take point to what is the January and the February diagrams, they start to show clearly that the southern part of Victoria is below average in rainfall.
So we're looking just for the benefit of the operator?
Yes, sorry, so that's on page five.
Page five.
And then page five, and then page seven, so page five first, which is the, which talks about the January forecast. And obviously rainfall is one of those critical things, that there was below average forecast rain, but also on the top of that was above average or very much above average temperatures. Now, that is in both-
So the diagram with the pink is the rainfall diagram?
Yes, and the one above, sorry.
And the one above?
Is the temperature diagram.
I'm sure we all remember, very hot January.
Yes, very hot January, and in a heatwave sense, it wasn't just, we didn't have a fire season, we had a summer season, and we were very clear to indicate that it wasn't just about fire. We were walking into periods of long, hot periods, which meant there was heatwave warnings on numbers of days through the mid-part of January. From that, if you go to figure five and six, and I'll do it in sequence this way then, so figure five on page seven shows the forecast for February, which again shows above average or very much above average temperatures. And I might add also that that's not only maximum temperatures day, it's the minimum temperatures overnight, so we're being forecast for the overnight temperatures to stay high, and in a fire scenario, in a heatwave scenario, that gives little respite for either vegetation to change conditions and absorb moisture, or in a human sense, in a heatwave sense, that the urban population, the built-up areas were retaining temperature in the infrastructure, and obviously fatigue comes to those that are vulnerable, community vendors. And likewise, it continues to say below or very much below average rainfall was expected. I haven't got it with me, but the amount of rain that fell during that period was consistent with the forecast.
Right, so that translated to a fairly busy summer for the fire services, and if we go back to your statement on page five, there is-
A diagram.
A diagram showing fires and incidents of interest over the summer.
Yes, critical days, which was the fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth of January, where fires started in the Malle, Grandpines and in the East Gipsland due to lightning. And the fires in the Grandpines were of significance during that period, in particular on the fifteenth and sixteenth, where Hall's Gap was actually evacuated, and significant resources. Those fires, although the Grandpines fires was contained in a reasonably quick time, the Malle and East Gipsland fires were in difficult country, different country, in the sense one was in sandy desert country and another one was in remote bushland, which is East Gipsland. They all, they continue to play to be significant fires during the period of January and February. From that, you can see there are the figures of the types of hectares burnt, but I think the interesting figures for the season, four thousand six hundred grass and scrub fires were reported for the summer season. Seventy-eight of those are of significance, and you can look at that and say there's seventy-eight fires of significance that have been significantly impacted on some communities, but you can also look at it to say that first attack in many instances was very successful. So from an MFB, CFA and DEPI point of view, there has been a high level of success about first attack and what first attack meant in areas across Victoria. It also required supplementation, that is, there was resources in deep forested areas from ACT, New South Wales and New Zealand, but likewise, Victoria were also able to put resources over the border in the early part of the season in New South Wales and during the peak period in January into South Australia. So if it wasn't just about Victoria, there was certainly the south-eastern part of Australia was dry and continued to be dry for the period. And I think that's shown in a timeline on the next diagram. So the diagram there, simply starting from left to right, shows support to New South Wales in October, which is the Blue Mountains fires, and then we moved into the first total fire ban on the first week of November, seventh of November, and it extends through there to show not only fire, but there's heatwave events on the thirteenth to the seventeenth of January and very hot weather periods all the way through. So it, as I said before, it wasn't just about fire, it needs to be taken as a summer lens in the broader sense.
All right, now, if we can move to the weekend of the eighth and ninth of February. You have told us in your statement that early on, the seventh of February, the chief officer of the CFA declared a total fire ban for that day, that's in paragraph twenty-seven of your statement.
Yes. For both days, yes.
For both days, without waiting to see how the forecast eventuated. And if we can just go to the state fire weather briefing for the ninth of February, which is, I think, that tab ten of your folder, and the hyperlink is in paragraph forty-one.
Tab ten is the fire investigation report.
Oh, is it? Shouldn't be.
Tab nine is Sunday, the ninth of February with diagrams.
All right.
That one, that's it, yes. From that-
Now, can you talk us through this fire weather briefing and what the significance of that is for the fire services and the responsibilities that you had to discharge?
I'll take you back one step. We always get seven-day products from the Bureau, so on the third, we were briefed about the next seven days. Obviously, that's an internal document, because the Bureau normally run fairly strong on a four-day forecast, seven days preliminary, four days is a forecast. We knew from that that the weekend of the eighth and ninth appeared to be weather of significance, so in that sense, we had a seven-day scenario that we worked towards. The products that are presented on that screen there, if I start at the bottom, which is the grassland fire danger index, and the middle diagram is the forest fire danger index, there's two indexes that provide us with indexes of underpinning issues to do with fuels, the types of fuels, the dryness of the fuels, and then it overlays weather conditions. In the state of Victoria, there are nine weather districts, and those nine weather districts are described in the top diagram, so there's the Malle, Wimra, South West right through to East Gipsland.
And the one that we're interested in here is Western-
Western South Gipsland. The reason there's two fire danger indexes, the Malle, Wimra and Northern Country use grassland fire danger indexes to declare what is the fire danger rating, because they're predominantly grassland areas, and the remaining six weather districts, including Western South Gipsland, used forest fire danger. If you look at the forest fire danger chart, the middle part of Victoria, in the Western South Gipsland-
This is the middle-
The middle diagram, and you go in there and look at the scale beside it, the forecast was put in for that there was a pocket of Western South Gipsland, which also it's to the eastern side of the Latrobe Valley at a hundred plus forest fire danger index. Now, that's a pocket. Across the Western South Gipsland area, it had also areas that were severe and extreme, so the forest indexes were fifty to seventy-four, in some areas were seventy-five to ninety-nine and other areas went a hundred plus in parts of it. When you averaged that out, the figures that were published on the day said that the forest fire danger index for Western South Gipsland was ninety-seven, which calculates it to be extreme fire danger. If it was a hundred and one plus, it had the potential to be code red, and in my witness statement, we talk about the planning for code red, but we did not declare a code red day, and a code red day is not declared solely from the figures that are put on the table. I have the responsibility to intervene and discuss the issue of what a code red means, because it sees a total change in government policy about how we operate schools, how people move around in the environment. The figures were there, they'd stacked up, so the average across the Western South Gipsland weather district averaged out to be a forest fire danger index of ninety-seven, which is hence why it was declared to be an extreme fire danger day, and overlaying that is where the CFA Chief Officer has a legislative responsibility to declare a total fire ban. Remembering a total fire ban is about behaviour of people with machinery, equipment and restricting factors to start a fire, whereas the fire danger rating is used to warn people of what they should do and what it means to them. So there's two parts which are very important in Victoria. That is a fundamental change since the O nine fires. I think traditionally, if you're over the age of fifty in Victoria, you'd probably look at a total fire ban as being the trigger. We are redesigning, we have redesigned, and now we need to make sure we re-educate the Victorian community to understand the fire danger rating is the informative part of fire, and a total fire ban is a behavioural issue about fire causation.
All right, now, looking at the top of the three maps, there are two blue lines across there. Can you explain the significance of those?
They're the forecast wind change, so in Victoria, traditionally, we receive winds from the north or the northwest during the start of the day, and during a bad fire day or those of significant fire days, we will see a wind change. Those blue lines are indicating when the wind moves, the wind change moves across, some call it a cold front, but the wind change moves across Victoria, and the line that is from Mildura to Geelong, marked eleven a.m., is the wind change was predicted to move through Victoria with that line, to see the wind change from the northwest to the west and then off to the southwest. And later in the evening at five p.m., it would be from, I'll say, Yarra Wonga to Malacuta, that, the second blue line. It's a very important part of firefighting, it's a very important part to understand that the fire, if a fire's running, it will change direction, and historically, we will lose more ground after the change than before the change. So the wind change is absolutely fundamental, not only in fire behaviour and fire suppression, but it's important for a community to understand of the direction of the fire and what potential it will do after the change.
Yes, and looking at the synoptic pattern and forecast in the bottom right-hand corner of that page, there is a very large black spiky line moving across Victoria, that's-
That's the change.
The change.
That's the change.
And there is a forecast of strong winds, uh, essentially at right angles to each other before and after the change.
And in this change, um, the, the forecast showed that the winds stayed strong after the change for a period. So it wasn't, it wasn't simply the change, the wind speed was strong on the change. It also showed the, the wind speeds would be, um, remaining strong after the change for a period.
All right, now, that's obviously a very concerning forecast from the point of view of fire weather. Would you agree with the, um, assessment that it was the worst forecast since Black Saturday?
Uh, definitely the case.
Particularly in light of the hot, dry summer that we've already experienced.
That's right, the, the conditions prior to, um, the conditions of the, of, um, the two months, but in particular, conditions running in for the, for the ten day prior, um, showed no respite in the weather conditions at all. The fuels were dry, uh, and obviously we had weather conditions that overlaid it.
All right, now, I'd like to take you to, uh, the situation on the evening of the eighth of February, which you, um, address in paragraph thirty-five of your statement. And there is a state situation report um, at six o'clock in the evening on, on Saturday, the eighth. Now, just, uh, looking for a moment at the statewide situation, what, uh, were you managing, um, on that day?
Um, well, I have the responsibilities as state controller to be at state level. And underneath me is, uh, eight regional controllers that are in place. Uh, those regional controllers, uh, uh, work for me but come from agencies. So they could be a DEPI, uh, MFB or CFA employee in the main. Uh, we have used in some cases SES people if they've got fire competencies. Uh, at state level, I also appoint deputy state controllers. And on that day, I had two, uh, deputy state controllers. One was looking after the three metropolitan regions and the other one had to focus on the five rural regions. Um, the regional controller for, uh, Gipsland is based in Trelgann and Brian Russell is his name. He's a CFA person. He had been in place all week, so he had seven days in that responsibility. Um, so he had the preparedness as well as walking, um, through the eighth and ninth, uh, which is, which was a, a good sit, uh, position to be in to have consistency. Underneath there, there is intercontrollers appointed and those intercontrollers, um, again, come from agencies but are qualified, uh, assessed and endorsed people, um, what we call level three controllers. And, uh, the example here is that the Trelgann ICC, um, had a level three controller in place. So that's what we call the line of control. That's new since O nine. Uh, it operates differently. It's an outcome of the Royal Commission to ensure that there is one person at state level, which is myself. And there is a nominated person that has a responsibility to oversight the region on my behalf and also a nominated intercontroller in on, on that, that weekend, um, in thirty-four intercontrol centres across Victoria. So the preparedness level is, is documented. It's, uh, it's consistent with the weather and the type of risk that we face. Uh, and it's very important that the line of control is a new initiative and does work, uh, and something that, uh, we, we have developed to be a successful, um, management structure different than previous. Um, from that.
We, we, I'm, I'm looking at a document that I don't think you have open in front of you. It's behind tab. Mine are out of order, but I think it's behind tab five. Could be state operational brief overview.
That's it.
Now, we see on. Where are we? Sorry, we just get the right document off on the screen, Mr Lapsley, can spare me. Now, this document is, uh, referenced in paragraph twenty-eight of your statement. So what role does this document play? Does that, um, is that part of the briefing to you about the statewide situation?
Uh, it is. Um, I actually ask, so the planning unit within the state control centre has a responsibility, um, to work with appropriate officers for all of those, uh, issues to be dealt. It's also broadened that, it's actually in the, in the rear part of it, talks about what agency readiness is. And it goes into some of those functions of, uh, how we would deal with evacuation, traffic management, impact assessment, um, relief and, and recovery, including fire causation. So it's about readiness, but it's also about the capabilities of functional responsibilities, um, that we, we ensure. And I suppose like any planning document, it's the work that goes on in the planning and represented by a document. So the work that goes under this document is significant.
Now, I, I don't see in this document a summary of what fires are burning as at the evening of the eighth of.
No, this document would have been produced, um, prior to the day itself. So it's a planning document.
Right.
Uh, so in here, it talks about the things we would have in place. So the number of aircraft, the types of intercontrol centres operating. And, uh, it's got some diagrams in it that shows the resources. So it's a planning document, it's a brief that shows the level of planning for what is two days of significant weather. The situation report, which would be in some other location, would be the situation, um, saying the number of fires, the types of fires, the location of fires.
All right. Um, now, one of those fires was the Hens Oak fire.
Yes.
As, uh, we've been referring to it. Uh, that was the fire that ignited on the seventh of February, the Friday.
Correct.
Um, to the northwest of the town of Morwell and the Hazelwood mine.
Correct.
Um, now, north, northwest is, is a particularly significant location in terms of forecasting where the fire might go.
Yes.
Um, can you explain why that is?
Um, as I explained before, the, um, uh, traditional winds for a bad fire day will be north or northwest. Um, the fire will be fanned by those hot, dry winds. And then, uh, obviously, as the change moves through, the winds will move to the west and southwest. Uh, that played out on this fire. So the, the eastern side of the Hens Oak fire is of the most significant side. So the side, the, the moral side of the fire to ensure the containment lines are in place, that when it's pressured by northwesterly, westerly or southwesterly winds, that it has, um, sufficient, uh, um, control lines in place to withstand the pressures that it will be put under. Uh, that does play out, uh, the, the priorities of what that fire was about.
All right, now, um, you tell us in paragraph forty-two of your statement that you were at the state control centre early on the morning of the ninth.
Uh, correct.
Expecting a bad day.
Yes.
Uh, and you say that you were briefed by agency commanders. What was the briefing about the existing fire conditions for the Hens Oak fire?
Um, the Hens Oak fire, uh, that night, so Friday night, uh, so I'll take you back a moment. The fire started around three thirty in the afternoon. Uh, local resources, so it's a Friday afternoon, uh, around about five, thirty or six o'clock, additional resources were put onto it, including aircraft. Uh, at about six o'clock, I personally spoke to DSDBI at state level to talk about the potential of this fire and its location and as you've described before, because it's to the northwest of Morwell and the mining infrastructure, it was a, a fire of, of note. Uh, likewise, the regional controller had spoken to the deputy state control in regards to, uh, the potential of fire and what was required. It was listed as contained and during Saturday, it remained contained. If you look at the figures, uh, it was estimated to be a hundred and fifty hectares in size at, uh, around about eight o'clock or, or fall of, or fall of darkness on Friday night. Uh, at fall of darkness, it also transferred from local control to the intercontrol centre at Trelgann. So it had a, a management structure of significance and they ran a, a night shift. Uh, it's reported at twenty, now I'll say twenty-three hundred hours, but around eleven PM on the Saturday night, uh, to be a hundred and fifty-six, a hundred and fifty-six hectares in size. That means the fire itself had not moved in that twenty-four plus hour period. Uh, there was a level of, of, of confidence about the containment. Uh, it's still, when we say contained, that means it's got a control line around it, but there's still active fire inside the fire. So there'd still be smoke showing from it and there'd be still fire burning inside the contained area.
All right, so there's a hierarchy.
Of, of status.
Fire, there's a going fire.
A contained.
Contained fire.
Under controlled and safe.
And safe.
So it's still listed as contained, uh, and those that were in control, and obviously you'll talk to them during the week, um, the, the level of confidence was fairly strong and stayed contained. Still had impacts on the highway, so the Princess Highway was closed. The Rower Line had, uh, had burnt sleepers and was restricted use of trains. So it already had some consequences. Um, the regional emergency management team, so the team that is led by the regional controller in Trelgann and the regional emergency management team is made up of, uh, all the other departments. So Big Pole, Department of Health, uh, Big Roads, uh, all of the agencies across, uh, Gipsland. Uh, at ten thirty on the Saturday morning, it was discussed, including, uh, with the central, uh, the, the central Gipsland, uh, the central Gipsland, the central industries group, so C E G I G, um, to say that this fire, although contained, had potential. If it come out with, with wind, if it had, uh, bad conditions on, on the Sunday, it had potential to move towards Morwell and could impact on both Yulorn and Hazelwood Mines. So that group was briefed, including.
So that was a conversation between.
The regional controller. Yes.
And somebody from the C G E I G.
There are minutes of who's attended, I haven't got them with me. And followed up later on with the chair of, uh, the, the group itself, which was, uh, Nick Demetrius, who chairs it.
Loy Yang, I think.
He's normally at Loy Yang, um, Loy Yang A. Uh, so they were engaged, Hancock's were engaged about the potential. And they were provided, um, with the Phoenix mapping products to show the potential of what may happen if it was to spot out, if it was moving in, in its lines. Now, I, I say that in the sense that I'd expect that to occur. Uh, at state level, we obviously talked to those state representatives, so Chief Commissioner of Police, Chief Health Office, all of those, and that's called State Emergency Management Team, meets every day. At regional level, the regional emergency management team is fully engaged under ledish by the regional controller, was fully engaged. And my observations is that the information was there and agencies were briefed and including the industry, uh, and plantation owners. So, um, to my observation, um, information was there, but the fire was still listed as contained on, all the way through until, um, we got the winds picked up on the Sunday at around about one fifteen.
Now, I'll come back to the management of the Hens Oak fire in a little while, but, um, to begin with, I think it might be useful for, um, to look at an overview. Now, there's a map that has been provided that's not a next tier statement. It's called Hazelwood Mine Overview. Uh, F S C dot triple zero one dot double zero one dot triple zero three. All right, so this is a map, as I understand it, that has been produced in retrospect after the fires had burned and been brought under control. Um, but it's quite a useful map because it, uh, provides an overview of what was happening around Morwell. In paragraph forty-three of your statement, you've told us that there were three major fires and you've identified those as the Hens Oak fire, which we've already touched on, the Hens Oak extension fire of the ninth of February and also the Driffield Strislicki highway fire. Could you just talk us through each of those fires and also deal with the one to the, um, the top right of the map? And yes, we do have a laser pointer.
Um, the Hens Oak, can I get this wrong?
Yes.
Is it going to work in the screen?
Oh, I don't think so.
Technical flaw? Finger? Should I pin? Um, the Hens Oak fire, I think this is five years ago, the fire of the seventh of February, hundred and fifty-six hectares in size, uh, reported at that time.
Yeah, sorry, Mr Lapsley, our transcribers are being quite concerned if you're not speaking into the microphone.
That'll be fine, yeah.
You sure?
Just put it on the corner of the table.
Beautiful. Hens Oak McDonald track fire, I call it in my, as a Hens Oak fire. Um, some of them describe it as a Hens Oak McDonald, um, track fire. Hundred and fifty-six hec, six hec, uh, hundred and fifty-six hectares in size, contained, reported at eleven PM on Saturday night, is that clear? That fire stays contained. The pressure point is there when the winds change at one fifteen, the, the fire comes out here and travels, um, along here. So it's travelling, spotting ahead of itself, uh, when the winds are the strongest at seventy-six kilometres an hour. Travel in towards, uh, Morwell, puts a lot of pressure on the Morwell community. And with the wind changes moves around, spots into Yulorn, open cut, spots to another fire that then runs up into this plantation and ultimately, um, puts pressure on the Australian paper mill. So that fire is a continuation. Hens Oak, Hens Oak extension and the extension continues up at this five year. So that's one part of the fire.
All right.
Second fire, the Driffield fire starts at, um, down in the southern part at thirteen thirty-seven, it's reported. Uh, reported to be multiple starts on roadside and travels from plantation to open grasslands. This here, some would think it's fire trucks that pull this up. Fire trucks making effort, but it runs into a riverbed and slows. Fire trucks are successful in that area, particularly on this road, and they tidy that fire up. The issues of spotting, this has got huge potential to spotting and did. It's also got the area where it's running and burnt. And, uh, the potential here is that this has got vegetation through parts of it, being part of the, the regeneration area and has burnt. And the conjecture is whether this is spotted into there and also this is spotted to there. And this afternoon or today, you'll see more modelling on what that means. I believe it's a probability of spotting both ways. Spotting from this into, into the mine and this from the plantation's well back and the plumes that were up, the convection columns were very significant, very significant, um, uh, as in upper, upper areas. Most would say it, it would not spot from the grass and I think that's actually fair to say. The grassland spotting would be low, but that plantation spotting high is of higher probability.
All right, and there was, um, plantation, uh, plantation area that was burned in the Hens Oak fire, was there not?
Yes, the, this burns here is a plantation, that burned into, they pull it up by using plantation lines. So the plantations are the green areas and we've got plantation burns in it. And this is obviously significant plantation in this area that's coming up on April. I think the most important thing out of this, this is a complex fire, pressure on the Morwell community. Um, it's, as, as it moves in, a lot of pressure on the Morwell community. Uh, we have got a set of control priorities that are very clear to our controllers that primacy of life is the number one priority. And they would resource and move resources based on primacy of life. That is a significant part. Uh, we, we would have expected it up into the Lewis houses and they didn't in that western part of Morwell. We expected to lose houses for the type of fire behaviour to come in. And likewise, um, the smoke that come off this, there would be a lot of people to expect firing here. I think there would have been multiple reports. The fire wasn't there, it was actually smoke that come through. So there would have been a lot of fire, a lot of fire truck activity and community activity in this area as a fire. They considered the fire was coming in, but it would burn the smoke.
All right, um, and these are the final boundaries of the fires, so.
These are the final parameters.
The area within the mine, if you can just point that out. So that's the fire that burned in the northern batties of the mine. And that area is the fire to the south in the southern and eastern batties. All right, thank you. Now, there was one other significant fire in the area on the day, um, the Jack River fire. Where is that relative to Morwell?
Um, Jack River is, uh, near, so, uh, I'll, I'll say, um, it's about forty-five kilometres to the southeast. And I might not be a hundred percent right on the forty-five kilometres, but it's of that, of that ilk.
Now, to return to the Hens Oak fire, um, you told us, uh, a bit already about the early stages of that fire. Um, in terms of the origin of the fire, it's been investigated by a CFA fire investigator.
Uh, correct.
And you provided a copy of that fire investigator's report with your statement. I don't need to go to it, but in summary, the conclusion was that the cause of the fire that ignited on the seventh of February was, um, a campfire.
A campfire and suspicious.
Yes, um, so it's been treated by police as suspicious, but the fire investigator's initial finding was that it came from a campfire.
Campfire, yes.
Um, now, you outlined earlier the incident control structure that was in place for the Hens Oak fire and it was just Mr Jeremiah was the incident controller for that fire at the Trelgann ICC on the evening of the eighth of February.
Uh, now, I just might point that out, on the evening of the eighth, uh, Laurie Jeremiah was the intercontroller day and he had in night when he slept a deputy intercontroller.
Yes, incident controls are.
Yep.
Need to sleep as well.
Yeah, that's apparently so.
Um, all right. Now, you, you've explained how. Now, you, you've explained how the risk was recognised and there were communications to, um, Essential Industries in the Latrobe Valley through a peak body, if you like, the Central Gibbsland Essential Industries Group. Um, now, what were the steps that were taken overnight on the eighth and in the early hours of the ninth to contain that fire or to keep it contained?
Um, the overnight strategy, uh, was additional resources, so they thought in additional strike teams into the valley. Uh, and obviously at night, we don't fly, we, we're unable to fly, um, fire operations aircraft, and we haven't got that capability. So all aircraft goes down, um, at dusk and comes back up, um, the next day. We also moved, uh, other resources in and increased the air fleet, um, because of the potential of this fire. And, uh, on, on, uh, on the Saturday, it was about consolidation and holding a fire in. And as I said before, and my observation is they did, um, extremely well to hold it in during the Saturday, um, with, with control lines. The other challenging factor that you have mentioned is the fact that the Jack River Fire started at ten fifteen or thereabouts on the Sunday morning, which would have put, and that was under the control of the Tralagon I C C, so one person had the oversight of, of the Hearn's Oak Fire and the potential of it, and also the, uh, the fire, um, down at Yarom at Jack Creek. Um, that would have, that would have been a decision-making process of what resources stayed in the valley and which one, which resources went to, to Jack Creek. Uh, and obviously, incident controllers have got the responsibility to do so, but there still were resources overnight and moving into the Sunday morning on the Hearn's Oak Fire.
All right, now, a, a significant, um, part of your role at state level is to keep an eye on the allocation of aircraft resources, which are a statewide resource.
Yes.
Um, and on a day like the ninth of February, there can be, there can be competing demands for them.
Stretched, I think so, yes.
Um, now, you tell us in paragraph seventy-three of your statement that, uh, you had a discussion with Mr. Russell, the regional controller, at about half past three on the Saturday afternoon, about whether there were additional aircraft needed for, um, for the Hearn's Oak Fire. Uh, and then you say it was determined that there were already sufficient aircraft available. Um, so to begin with, what aircraft were available at that point?
Um, I'd have to go to the list, but we, we actually had two heli-tacs, which are the medium heli-tacs, a number of fixed wind bombers, and we supplemented it with another two heli-tacs. And they didn't come down until the Sunday morning. Um, I think it's also important that in Brian's responsibility, he's looking after Gibbsland, he has a regional responsibility, so he would be looking after fires that were in east Gibbsland as well, so there was a large fleet of aircraft in Gibbsland. And we'd increase the state fleet significantly. Um, one of the discussions that was had was about, um, one of the air crimes, one of the large orange air crimes coming out of Essendon to come down. Uh, that wasn't released on the Sunday, uh, we made a very clear decision it was to stay in the metropolitan area. And in hindsight, um, we believe that worked successfully in the sense we had fires at Mickleton, Warren Dite and Gisborne. And, uh, we're losing houses and the crane was an important part in the interface area. Uh, it's also about the types of aircraft. Um, it's one thing to ask for helicopters, some, some have got tanks underneath them and fly and drop water, others have got, um, long strings with buckets under them. And they are used tactically different. And in forested areas, and certainly in the mine, it proves later on with those that have got buckets and long strings, are more capable to do a different job. So, so it is about the type of, um, aircraft, both fixed winds and rotarys, and then the distribution of them. And through that discussion, um, by increasing the number of heli-tacs in the Gibbsland area, um, I'm sure Brian would have liked more, but we'd come to a, an understanding that what was available and what he had for the risky, had in front of him was sufficient.
All right, so that, you had that discussion with Mr. Russell at about half past three. Mr. Jeremiah, in his statement, says that at about four o'clock, he made a request for further resources. Um, for two additional helicopters to be in the Latrobe Valley by the end of the day, presumably so they could fly at first light.
And, and we, we, uh, took steps, um, to do that, so the extra two, but they never, they, they weren't in the valley until either mid-morning or late mid-morning on the Sunday.
He puts their arrival at about noon.
Yeah, that'd be about right, so we, we did apply or did fly additional machines, which mean we had to shuffle the state fleet, but we were a, able to do that in looking at the ca, the, the risk of the other side of the state. Now, it is important, um, probably not for the outcome of this, but obviously state resources like aircraft, um, we're also got them parked in, uh, New South Wales, so some, some sit over the border that we use both ways. And likewise, the southwestern side of the state, we done further assessments with whether to say what aircraft needed in the southwest, knowing the change would move there through the southwest early in the day, not during the, the peak temperature periods of the day, which allowed us to refine the, the strategy. So I think what comes out of there, initially Brian Russell, the regional controller, discussion. Once the incident controller asked for some more, and we always, will always take any request from an incident controller to say they've got a need, how do we do it? And subsequently, we were able to shuffle the fleet to get two additional heli-tacs into the valley on Sunday morning.
So with the clarity of hindsight, we can say it might have been, uh, very useful to have the additional aircraft there on the morning of, of the ninth of February. Um, is that something that you reviewed in your mind while you made that call at the time?
Yeah, look, I mean, you can always look in hindsight, I, I think you've got to deal with what's on the table at the time and the discussion.
And that's what I'm asking you to explain your reasoning on, on the evening of the eighth for not sending those aircraft down before the winds blew up on the ninth of February.
The, the, the reason would have been what did we have in the spread across Victoria? Um, the fact that the incident controller asked for some more, um, we did our damnedest to make sure that the incident controller got what, what he needed, and by reshuffling the state fleet, we were able to do that. Um, as you said, they weren't down until late morning or close to lunchtime. Um, what would they have done early in the day? Um, that's probably a hindsight question, um, and I mean, if you have them, you would do more with them. Uh, I think the other thing that's important with aircraft, once, once the wind speeds get excessive, aircraft doesn't operate either, so. So in some areas of fire operation, we have aircraft that cannot fly either due to wind speed or smoke. Um, so we do have other operational imperatives about how we use the, the air fleet. Um, I suppose what you are putting though, if there was, um, more aircraft, what would it have done in the morning? That's a hindsight question.
Yes, it is, um, so what I'm trying to understand is, is the rationale for not sending down that evening, um, the additional aircraft that the incident controller had requested so that he could use them at first light.
I'd have to go on with the reasons why, but I, it could have been that they were deployed to other fires on the Saturday afternoon and weren't able to be moved, transported until that period. Um, but it would be of that ilk that i- if they were available, they'd go, if they weren't available, it means they had some other, um, job to do. And remember, we still had other fires burning in the state, so I haven't got that with me and I haven't looked back on the records of exactly what aircraft were doing on the Saturday afternoon. Um, I think the principle here, though, the incident controller requested, um, we did what we could to ensure that they got those additional machines, the two. Um, the, the point at hand is, should have they been there at eight or why, why were they, why were they not there at eight and ended up there at eleven? And I haven't got that in front of me to give you that, that detail.
We've invited you back a couple more times, uh, in the course of the hearing, so we might just return to that when, when you have the facts at your fingertips. Now, the following paragraph of your statement, paragraph seventy-four, you say that Mr. Russell, the regional controller, identified key personnel to form a coal mine division of the Tralagon I M T. Uh, what does that mean?
Um, a division is, uh, is part of the structure underneath the incident control, so there's an incident controller and they can put in divisions. Uh, a division will have a divisional commander in, in charge of it, and underneath the division is sectors. So it's a management structure of forming a division. Um, it sees then the divisional commander is, um, is part of the incident management team out of Tralagon and answering to the incident controller out of Tralagon, it's not a separate incident in its own right.
All right, so that was a division within Mr. Jeremiah's incident management team, who were there specifically to deal with a coal mine fire should it eventuate?
Um, y- yeah, that was to consider, um, the potential of it, and, uh, and Brian obviously saw the need to have that in place to think about how it would operate.
All right, and who, and I forgive you if you don't know the answer to this, but who were the people who were in that division?
No, I don't know.
We'll, we'll ask Mr. Jeremiah when we see him later in the week. All right, now, I just, uh, would like to ask you, before we move into the, the response to the fire in the mine, um, just briefly, the Driffield Fire, this also is being treated by police as suspicious. Uh, and what is known is that it ignited at several points around the Stresleki Highway to the southwest of the mine, um, at almost the exact time that the wind change came through. Um, and then blew in a north easterly direction towards the mine, but was ultimately pulled up along the Morwell River diversion.
Yes. Um, I'd say, just one point, um, suspicious is one, I would say police have still got it listed as deliberate.
Yes. Now, the, the map shows a fairly clear boundary to that line along its northeastern edge.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, now, are you able to tell us what resources were devoted by the C F A to, um, pulling up that fire?
Uh, no, I'm not, and incident controller would be best to give you the absolute detail of the trucks and the strategy that was deployed. What I can say though is that, um, one of the critical things about the, the deployment there, um, I think was very successful in the sense that they were able to use it, you know, although it was a, a riverbed that slowed it. Um, you only slow fires with riverbed, you still need trucks to be able to pull it up, and I think they've done extremely well as a firefighting effort. Uh, and the next priority that the incident controller, and I know this, uh, occurred, was then to assess how many trucks stayed on the Driffield part of the fire and whether those trucks were needed to go into Morwell, particularly the pressure that Morwell was under with both fire and smoke in the town.
Hmm, all right.
And I think Laurie's in the best position as incident controller to give you the, the detail, um, of the tactics of how, which they did that.
Now, it, it does appear to have been a fairly short, sharp campaign, um, but that fire was, was contained relatively quickly in the afternoon of the night.
Yeah, it was, it was a good fire, though.
Now, when you took us through that, that map earlier, you, um, said that, uh, it was possible that one of the causes, that the cause of the fires in the mine was spotting from either the Hearn's Oak Fire more likely, or the Driffield Fire less likely because it was a grass fire with a smaller fuel load?
Um, when you, when you see the, the mapping this afternoon, the potential of spotting off the Driffield Fire is a, is a, is a real probability in the sense that, um, the forested area and the, and the convection column, um, that was operating, both had significant convection columns and the wind speeds were significant. Um, it will show, and I shouldn't preempt it, but it will show spotting in and around the mine, but in the, in the worked area of the mine, that was probably, um, better protected in the sense it, I, I would suggest it was wetter, that there's water in there. Um, and both would have been putting significant smoke into the mine, so the mine would have been covered in smoke. Um, but certainly the convection column above had the potential to carry embers some distance.
All right, so there was that potential from both of those fires. But another possible cause of ignition of the fires in the mine was a hotspot within the mine, was it not?
Uh, that's certainly a, a potential cause, I, I have had no reports to me, and I've been back through C F A, that there was no reports from the mine or anyone in the mine to C F A to say there was another fire in there. So we, we've taken the assumption that it has been spotting in or the travel of fire into the mine and not hotspots. There's been no report that I'm aware of, of another type of fire, either a hotspot or through mechanical devices or vehicles to cause fires in the mines.
All right, recent history suggests that it's a possible cause of, of fire in the mine. There are two instances in the last decade of significant fires being caused by existing hotspots on the worked out batters of the mine in two thousand and five and again in two thousand and eight.
Yeah, that's a fact, um, and another one is any moving vehicles or any other, any other heat source that could be in, in and around the mine.
All right. Now, another feature of the Hearn's Oak Fire was that it did actually-
Just, just, I might make one other point. If there is a fire in the mine and it's not reported, that's an offence in its own right. It's a doctored fire ban, um, I would suggest that, um, we've got a, a mining organisation that takes fire very seriously and I would see no reason, no reason at all, and it's unacceptable if there was, um, that if there is a fire in the mine, that it wasn't reported. Um, so I just put that as a very serious, um, point, that if there is, um, fires that haven't been reported, a doctored fire, that's an offence in its own right. And I would say that, uh, that I don't think we've got a mining company that operates in that, in that way, I think they take fire very seriously.
An alternative scenario, of course, is that nobody actually saw where the fire ignited.
True.
And it's a question of working out what's the most probable explanation.
So something said, when there is, as you mentioned earlier, something that's smoke around.
Yep.
Uh, that, that there's all sorts of possibilities as to, uh, where, whether, uh, a, a fire hole fire or a machine linked fire or spotting, uh, and what you say, the convection currents and the presence of smoke, uh, make, uh, the whole question of causation in relation to, uh, fires, uh, or if it was only one, uh, uh, the spreading of the one fire, uh, but I take it from what you're saying, uh, it's the most likely position that it was, uh, spotting from the Hearn's Oak Fire, uh, query spotting from the Driffield Fire, uh, that caused the fires, uh, in, in the mine.
If, and I won't be able to take the exact paragraph, in my witness statement, um, a critical time is two thirty P M in the afternoon where there was, um, people reporting fires in the mine. And other witnesses will tell you that the attempts, uh, both successful and not successful by mine operators, um, sold the equipment they had in the mine to extinguish those fires, and I believe they were successful in, in some instances of fires as they started to be extinguished by the mine, um, staff themselves. So I, I take that in a, in a sequence and the, the modelling will show it out later on today, that if you've got, you know, thirteen fifteen, Hearn's Oak breaks out, thirteen thirty-seven, Driffield breaks out, at, at fourteen thirty, less than an hour from the Driffield Fire, uh, just over an hour from the Hearn's Oak Fire, that people are reporting fires in the mine, um, I would suggest that, that that has some logic about the fire activity coming from both fires to be, have to be contributed and seen very seriously as the cause of the fire in the mine.
And, and your conclusion is informed very significantly by the Phoenix simulation that we'll, we'll send over today.
And you'll see that this afternoon.
Now, another feature of the Hearn's Oak Fire is that it spotted into the Yulorn Open Cut Mine on the afternoon of the ninth of February. Um, that fire did not burn for six weeks, it was brought under control relatively quickly. Have you done a comparison between the two, two open cut fires?
And my observation, they are different and, and obviously they're different mines. Um, and you need, I, I think someone else is better qualified than I to talk about the, the type of mine they are, but, um, the area where the fires are in Yulorn is a lot shallower. It's got probably different rehabilitation methods to it, um, and I'd suggest it's got different accessibility to it, that is, it's more accessible. Um, so you might see a, a more, um, successful operation in an earlier stint. Uh, so that's there. Uh, I haven't done a detailed analysis of the Yulorn Open Cut Fires, um, as in the detail of it, but that would be on my observation, they are different mines. Uh, Hazelwood is a deeper mine, um, and certainly, um, for that reason, has more potential exposed coal and different rehabilitation methods in some parts of it.
Now, you touched a moment ago on the timing of reports of fire in the Hazelwood Open Cut Mine, and you addressed this question at paragraph sixty-three to sixty-six of your statement. Um, I think the question that we asked you was how and when the fire services first became aware of the fires in the mine.
And it goes back to what I was saying before, um, I haven't got the actual personal persons, um, but the first report of it is, uh, is that afternoon.
Well, let, let's, um, try to introduce a bit of precision into it. You, you mentioned in paragraph sixty-two, reports to the triple O emergency number. Um, now, ESTA, the Emergency Services Telecommunications Authority maintains very detailed data about calls to the triple O number, does it not?
Yeah, it, it does, and I think the other thing, it's, it's interesting here, public, um, reports from the public inciting of smoke on a significant afternoon, uh, may not see that that's exactly where the fire is. So, I think, and I, and I use that example, um, when you go up Latrobe Road, sort of western side of Morwell, there would be multiple reports of fire, but when you look at the map, there was no fire there, but it would have been seen that the smoke would have been the generation of, and the significant amount of smoke, that fire was very close and in some re- that fire was very close, and in some respects it was very close, but it didn't burn every blade of grass in that area.
Now, it is possible, uh, with ESTA's computer rated dispatch data, usually to identify the call. Um, have you had resort to ESTA's data to identify whether and when the mine called in a fire to triple zero?
No, I haven't done that, and it's not part of my statement. What I, the only thing I have looked at the ESTA logs is where radio traffic was there, about some of the issues of radio traffic off fire trucks. Um, but I haven't done that, that's not to say we can't do that, but I haven't done it at this point to look into that level of detail.
Well, the fires emergent, the, the mine's emergency procedures, um, stipulate that the first point of report is to be triple zero. Uh, so can you do that for us, please? Can you identify from triple zero, from ESTA's records, whether and when there was a report of fire in the mine from GDF Sewers? Now, there were obviously some other, um, sources of information for the fire services on that day, uh, and you mentioned some radio traffic, uh, what were you referring to there?
Um, the one I was looking at in particular was access, uh, and talking about access of fire trucks into the mine, where they've got security gates and, um, the security gates of significance.
Right, so, but by that time you actually have trucks trying to respond to a fire in the mine, so presumably before that, somebody knows that there's a fire in the mine and has sent the trucks there.
Um, I think, uh, when they say in the mine, I think it's about the amount of smoke, and I think again, we've got where it's not conclusive that there's a fire in X part of the mine, it's, it's, um, seeing that there would be fire in there. And the other part in there that, um, that I can look in the same thing is there were strike teams moving in and out of the area, and some of them were in and around the mine, and then were redirected, and Laurie Jeremiah will cover this off about the priorities of, uh, primacy of life and property.
Yes.
So the priorities were moving trucks around the mine and...
Uh, we are told by Mr Shanahan, I believe it is, one of the, um, the people at the mine who responded on the night, that there was a, um, an aircraft, small plane that was dropping, um, retardant, um, in the very early stages of, of the fire in the northern batters. Um, do you have any understanding of how that aircraft was deployed to, to the...
No, again, it would be Laurie Jeremiah. Yeah, the, the tactical things are certainly Laurie's responsibility.
Right, and we should also ask him about communications directly between the mine and the ICC. So they would be the two main sources you would expect of information that there was a fire in the mine, a call to triple O and direct contact with the ICC.
Yes, and direct contact could be from either the, um, the industry, the mine itself, the sewers, or it could be from fire service personnel.
Alright, are you able to say when the first of the CFA resources actually arrived at the mine?
Um, no, again, it's Laurie's, I've left the tactical one to Laurie, um, I haven't gone to that level of detail.
Right, the evidence that's currently available to us suggests that the first significant resource was a strike team that was initially dispatched to the Energy Bricks factory at around about seven o'clock in the evening, and finding no fire there, observed there was a fire in the mine and then sought access.
I'm aware of that strike team, I'm unsure, the bit I'm unsure about is whether there was resources in there before that. So I'm aware of the Energy Bricks strike team, and I'm aware of their network in the mine overnight to protect particularly critical infrastructure, um, and the critical infrastructure, or the infrastructure that they were protecting, um, was critical to the mine operation, and that is protecting pumps, um, electrical assets to allow the, the mine to operate successfully. I'm aware of that, what I'm not aware of was the other resources prior to that strike team, and what were the resources that may have been in and around the mine, which would be...
Right, so again, that's a matter we should explore with Mr Jeremiah, and I understand what you say about the need for him to prioritise his resources. Sorry, just bear with me. Now, in your statement, you say that the CFA assumed control of the fire, this is at paragraph 95 of this statement, at about 10pm that evening.
Yes, that's correct.
And you say that it was, it was made clear at a meeting between mine management and CFA operational personnel that the CFA was the control agency for the fire?
Yes.
Um, was there any doubt about that, that the CFA would be the control agency?
Uh, I don't think there's any doubt, I think it's, um, one of the things we do in incident control, and we talk about assuming control is to make sure everyone is aware of the control. Uh, there's nothing worse than not assume, or, or assuming that someone's in control and they're not, so this is the clarification, um, which would be a normal process to say, this is a fire of significance and growing, and therefore will be ongoing under the management of CFA. Um, through the day, we have the line of control in any fire that was attended, obviously was in the, in the, in the, in the management system, this was obviously a protocol issue to ensure that the mine were aware that CFA had structure and what that structure was.
Alright, so there's a period of about eight hours elapses between the first report of fire in the mine around two o'clock, um, and when the CFA formally takes control. Um, again, with the clarity of hindsight, that does seem like rather a long time in an environment where first response is critical, like the initial attack is, is, is all in a coal mine fire.
Yeah, I, I just, I suppose the point there is, that's a protocol issue to ensure that it is communicated, the management structure, and that was being established. Um, it's correct to say, why wasn't that done at nine o'clock, eight o'clock, seven o'clock? Uh, the fact is, resources would have been in there. Um, the connection between the industry and CFA is something that daily they work together, they've got a very good relationship, a very good working relationship. And, uh, I think you'll see that the flavour is they know each other very well and they have understanding of resource and capability.
But the, the unknown at the moment is the extent to which there was CFA resources in the mine in that made-out period.
And, and in particular, as you've asked before, what was before the fire recorded at Energy Bricks and the strike teams that went to Energy Bricks, and the, the bit I haven't got in here is, and Laurie would have it, is the, the tactical, um, deployment of resources in that afternoon period.
So you clarify that, in, in paragraph 94, you refer to strike teams redeployed from Energy Bricks. Uh, that doesn't mean that they're Energy Bricks strike teams, that means that strike teams of the CFA that had been in the Energy Bricks area, uh, you've got no knowledge of any reports by personnel of Energy Bricks as to the problems that they perceived in their area?
Uh, no, I haven't here, Energy Bricks was, um, a major concern though when that was reported, because that was a, you know, Energy Bricks in itself, if it's on fire, often offers some significant problems to, not only Energy Bricks but the moral community, so that was of concern and of significance when that was reported, that fire in and around Energy Bricks.
So, there's, there's a theoretical potential to go to personnel from Energy Bricks to say what they can say if anything about the cause of the fire, or the nature, or the cause of the fire that they observed, the call for something to be deployed to the Energy Bricks area.
Yeah, that, that's correct. And the other thing, from Energy Bricks, you do get a view of the mine, that is, uh, a fairly, um, strategic position to see the mine.
Now, just for the sake of clarity, can you point out on the map there where the Energy Bricks briquet factory is?
It's about where your little, um...
So in the north-eastern corner of the mine?
Yes, in the north-eastern corner.
And the briquet factory is fed by a conveyor belt that operates through the mine?
Through the mine, and that was impacted by fire?
Yes.
And obviously there were then workarounds put in place that Energy Bricks could, to have, um, the supply of coal was done through a truck and travel, if that's the right term, um, instead of a conveyor belt.
Now, part of the handover from the mine operator to the CFA was, um, an incident action plan that you, um, annex, referred to at paragraph 98 of your statement, and I think you'll find it behind tab 15, in the folder.
Correct, it's a handwritten, uh, handwritten, um, incident action plan by Senior Station Officer Ross Mayle, who is a officer that is appointed to the Morwell, is a career officer appointed to the Morwell Fire Station, so he has ongoing knowledge of, um, the Morwell area and the industry.
Alright, so he was the person who had the conversation to make it clear that the CFA was now the control agency?
Uh, no, I believe it was, uh, Operations Officer Peter Lockwood that had the discussion in the evening, uh, and Ross Mayle, as a senior station officer, has got the responsibility for the day shift on the 10th. So the discussion that was, uh, held on the, on the Saturday night...
Okay.
Was with Peter Lockwood as the ops officer, and is my understanding, and this plan here was put together by Senior Station Officer Ross Mayle, um, for the day shift of the 10th, which is the number.
Alright, so he divides the fire up into sectors, having stated a number of, um, objectives. And on the fourth page of the document, we'll see north sector, central sector and east sector. Uh, I'd just like to ask you about, um, the strategy that was adopted in relation to the east sector. One of those, one of the steps that was proposed to be taken to, um, to suppress the fire was water bombing.
Yes.
Which I take to be, um, water bombing by plane or helicopter.
Yep.
Okay. Now, one of the learnings from the fire in December 2005 at the mine was that, um, helicopters did not assist in suppressing that fire, and there's a note in, or a recommendation in the review that GDF Sewers commissioned of the fire, "The use of the helicopter dumping, dumping water on the fire proved to make the situation worse and spread the fire due to fine coal dust present along the coal faces. Discuss with the CFA and advise the use of a helicopter is no good on a coal fire." That was a learning from, from late 2005. Um, do you have any understanding of how that learning was fed into the CFA's own understanding of ground coal fires?
Um, yes, now, two, two things here. Uh, one is, what come out of 2005, 2006, seven or eight, if any learnings out of the mine would all be about rotary aircraft that have tanks, so that is, they fly and they drop their water as they climb.
So rotary aircraft, helicopters?
Helicopters, helicopters that have got tanks underneath and they fly and it drops, and you'll see that as everyone sees Elvis, um, you'll see it fly and drop water. The difference now, we, we use, um, two machines, which are helicopters that have got, as I said before, a long rope or what I call a long string and a bucket, which means they can hover at quite higher levels and allow the water to drop in mass into the locations. Um, when this was requested, that water bombing was done, um, I was contacted, uh...
Right, just, just hold up a minute.
Yep.
The question I asked was, can you, do you have any understanding of how that learning from the 2005 fire was communicated to the CFA and incorporated in its firefighting practice?
Yeah, I don't, and the reason I don't is I wasn't, I'd left CFA, I left CFA in 2007, so there's a, I haven't got visibility of that training mechanisms that occurred as a result of the O5, O6 fires, the O6 fire, and subsequently what occurred in CFA. So I'm, I'm unaware of the level, I think though what I, what the point I'm making, different aircraft. So the request that we had Monday morning was to bring the machines that were down in East Gippsland that had these long strings and buckets into the valley, to put them into the valley operation, so it wasn't the same, it's a different learning. It's a different, it's a different machine, it's a different helicopter, it's got different equipment on board, therefore it operates differently. So water bombing was critical, and through the, through, through the next number of weeks, we used those, um, uh, uh, bucket of machines to effectively support the fire operations in the mine. They are different.
Right, now, the aircraft that were used in the firefight from this point on, were they all helicopters or were there also fixed wing aircraft?
There were some fixed wing, but in the main they will be helicopters, and they'll be helicopters with the long, the long string and the buckets, there was two of them brought in the valley for that reason. Took a little while to change the fleet around, but they were the ones that were then ideally better used in a open cut, or what I'll call a quarry environment, because the aircraft will sit normally, normally well up, and obviously if it's in against the batters, it's very difficult to fly the other machines, uh, effectively.
Alright, so there, there is, uh, an inconsistency between the GDF prior learnings from their fires and the initial approach that was taken to fighting this fire.
Yeah, inconsistent, but I think we're talking about different...
Let me, let me finish, um, the proposition I want to put to you. Um, given the prior learnings and the very definite statement that the CFA should be told that helicopters are no good in a coal mine fire, um, one would have expected to see some caution in the use of aircraft.
Hmm.
It's not apparent from this incident action, action plan, and nor is it apparent from the subsequent use of aircraft. Um, can you explain why use of aircraft was immediately adopted as a suppression method?
Um, I, I think they were looking at different machines, so, as I said before, a different capability, because on the Monday morning we were asked to release those different type machines that weren't available in 2006. Um, so these were ones that were seen to do a different job in a different way, and therefore I don't think people would have seen the same issue of how the, how the aircraft fly through and create, I'd say, turbulence in the air...
Yes.
Compared to where they sit and drop, um, drop, drop water at long lines, so it is a different operation. Um, I, I'm surmising that, um, from the request I had to release them, that when they said here water bombing, they were looking for water bombing helicopters with buckets on them.
Right, and that's what in fact was used by and large. Um, now you instituted some performance management, uh, right, or performance appraisal arrangements. Uh, what can you say, having done that and having seen the use of these helicopters over a long firefight, as to their effectiveness?
Um, they were very effective in part of the operation, they're not, uh, uh, an aircraft won't put any one fire out, it, it's part of a system. Um, either, uh, and you'll hear it from incident controllers as they talk, we, we developed a different system of work, uh, it evolved over the first few days in the sense that water is normally the weapon, as seen as the weapon. Um, we needed to introduce foams, and we needed to introduce technology to detect fire areas, and we needed to introduce aircraft that was effective to work in a system of work. So, use foam, use water, use aircraft, and it might not be in that sequence, but how the sequence operates. So one, get access to areas that were extremely hot and cover them with foam to cool them, to use aircraft then from above before ground crews were put in, um, to get close to it. So those, those are critical, but also the use of thermal cameras to actually understand exactly where the heat is. Unlike a fire in a house or in a, in a building, or a factory, or a bushfire, normally you put water on flames, in these you're putting water on hotspots that's extremely hot and burning in a incomplete combustion, um, in the wall, in the wall or floor of coal. So it's not as if you've got flames standing out at you, you need to be able to detect it, understand it and be able to do it. So the system at work that ultimately was, um, was established there was an important part, but the normal thing is water is the weapon, and everyone looks to use water in the main, and water is the best way to extinguish a fire, but needs other, other systems, foam aircraft and, and, and technology to assist us to get the...
And, and that was the suppression strategy that evolved over, over some weeks. In the early stages of the fire, were there any reports to you of the use of aircraft having in fact spread the fire?
Uh, no, I haven't had that report, and again, the controllers would be in a better position if that was the case.
Now, the 9th of February was, uh, an extraordinary day for you. There were fires burning across the state, including, um, quite close to Melbourne, um, as, as well as very significant fires all around Morwell. Um, I'm just interested in exploring with you the time, timeline that it took you and those working with you in the State Emergency Management Team to realise the significance and likely duration of the fire in the mine at Hazelwood. Um, and we might do this by looking at the State Control Centre Situation Reports. Um, there's one from the 11th of February, um, which is, do you have that document? So this is number 64 in that series. That's right. So these situation reports, I think you referred to them earlier.
Yes.
They, um, provide those who are managing the State Control Centre at the time with a, a snapshot of what, um, what is going on across the state. And if we can move through that document, the Morwell Hurns Oak Fire is, uh, is identified there, but the Hazelwood Fire is not identified as a separate fire at this stage, is it?
No, no, it's, um, in the bottom dot point that is still running under the Trobden ICC.
Yes, um, and... Yes, and really the only reference to it in this document is that there has been a separate I C C.
Established.
Established.
And this is dated the?
Eleventh.
Tuesday.
So it's two days after the fire's ignited. There's still clearly a great deal going on, but from this document at least, it would appear that the significance of the fire in the Hazelwood mine hasn't really come home at state level.
I didn't see that. I, from the moment, and was reported in the media on the Monday, that the most significant fire in the state was the mine at Hazelwood. And other people commented to me to say, but you're losing houses elsewhere, how could you say that? I had that comment to me. The reason I said that is that I knew that a fire in Hazelwood would be at least a week, two weeks. And on past experience, at least that. Now, past experiences to me was, the last fire I was there was in October two thousand and six, October two thousand and six. Although the day was a significant day, which very strong winds, a very dry day, it was still October. It didn't have that pre-drying of months of a summer. So we knew we're in, on the Monday, to the level of concern I had, I sent both the CFA chief and the M F B chief to Morel to inspect it and report back to me. Now, we don't normally do that. We don't normally send chiefs to fires to that extent. And we certainly don't send two chiefs to fires, and both of them were in the Hazelwood mine that afternoon, to come back and explain to us the extent and potential of it versus what was happening at A P M, because A P M was still burning versus Ylawn.
And that is reflected in the state control centre situation report for the following day, which I'll show you now. So this is just twenty four hours later. On the map, there's a lot less going on now. But the Morewell Hurns Oak fire is still shown as a, no, that may be the one one. This should be the one with the number one hundred and twelve, for the twelfth of February. All right, so there's a little less going on now. And the Morewell Hurns Oak fire is still shown as containing the Hazelwood fire.
I think if you just for a moment, if you look at that map, there's another fire up in under there. And it hasn't got a window. And the second fire underneath would be the Hazelwood fire, would be my opinion, but it hasn't got a window and an arrow pointing to it. Whereas the next map, you'll see that it then identifies two significant problems.
All right, and if we go to the third page of the document. The Trelgyn I C C is now handling the Morewell Hurns Oak fire and the Jack River fire. And there's a separate I C C, Hazelwood I C C.
Yes.
And there's a description there of the incident management structure. And then the second dot point, there's an estimate that the fire in the Hazelwood coal mine will burn for up to a month.
Yes.
Which has significant long-term implications for the community. And that was an assessment that had been made at state level on the twelfth of February.
Yeah, from inputs of the Monday. I think the critical thing here is, like I said before, to send the chiefs down was to get a very strategic understanding of what was happening not only in Hazelwood but A P M. A P M was still burning and had significant resources and then same with Ylawn. Obviously the threat to Morel had gone, still had hotspots around the Hurns Oak fire and the Driffield fire. But the fires of significant concern was A P M, Ylawn and Hazelwood. And we needed to get a clear understanding of the strategic resources that needed for those three.
The estimate that was given in that situation report turned out to be fairly accurate, did it not?
Reasonably accurate.
It was about a month before the fire was brought under control.
Under control was thirty one days and on the forty fifth day it was classified as so.
And that, it will burn for up to a month estimate, remained the estimate during the first week of the fire, did it not?
Yeah, we, yes, yes, there were some, if you listen to the media reports, there was a number of times that I was interviewed that we were saying potentially two weeks, but the worst case scenario would be a month. And I can explain the progression of the fire if you wish at some point, but it certainly has got some key dates and some fire behaviour and weather scenarios that are of significance during that period.
All right. But I'd just like to be clear that you were working on the basis at state level, that the fire would burn for up to a month.
Yes.
And at no stage during the first week, did you have cause to be more optimistic about when the fire might be put out?
I had some level of optimism, but I do need to listen to the people on the ground, because it's there for a month. And the reason I say that is, the first week, there was some level of success with the strategies. However, the weekend of the fourteenth, Friday the fourteenth, Saturday the fifteenth and sixteenth, the fire increased in size. And that then changed the whole strategy and the way in which we dealt with it. And then, you know, we've seen that we put a different work system in, we had to change our resourcing. We had an expert panel come and peer review what we were doing, which is not a normal activity of fire. Normally we do our reviews after the fire's been put out. So we put a team in of experts to support us and peer reviewers to say, the strategies would work, should work, could work and need to change if appropriate. And they included interstate and international inputs to that discussion.
There was a shift in the management, the structure of managing the fire, round about the twentieth of February, was there not?
There was a number of steps. The first was the incident control centre established on the date there, which is the, I'll get it wrong.
Eleventh.
Eleventh and twelfth of, and I was actually more on the twelfth. We actually assessed the effectiveness of that incident management team. And we could see that the incident was going to get bigger and we moved from Hazelwood to Trelgyn later that week. So we moved it into Trelgyn, which gave it a better management capability. And then, as you say, the twentieth was the point that we changed a number of management structures around how it would work within regional control and incident control. And that was, I believe there was a number of inputs there. One is the fire activity of the fifteenth and the amount of concern. But the meeting on Tuesday, the eighteen, I hope I've got the dates right, the Tuesday meeting of the eighteen, which was a community meeting in Morel. We, for the first time, saw a significant outcry of the community about the significance that needed to be dealt with and dealt with very quickly. The community's tolerance towards this fire had changed in a matter of days. So the Friday night, which would be the fourteenth, community meeting was reasonably placid. Taking information, being able to receive and take information. The change of the fire over the weekend saw absolute anger in the Morel community that we had to change not only the fire strategy, the community engagement strategy and the way in which the agency were operating in Morel.
Can you just explain what happened over the weekend, the fifteenth and sixteenth?
Well, there was a reasonably, it was a reasonably warm weekend. The winds weren't strong, the fire increased in size. And when I say the fire increased in size, there was a red flag warning put out off one of the trucks. And a red flag warning is when you have fire moving in around the firefighters. So it's an indication of concern. And the fire had moved in size and actually moved under some of the fire operations. So the fire itself had started to increase in size. We believe that's directly related to the weather conditions of the day. And the second day that the fire had a significant move was on the twenty fifth of February, where the fire actually come out of the mine and threatened the Hazelwood power station itself and ran across a batter and out of the mine and put significant pressure on the mine. That again was driven by a very dry, intense fire period. So we were seeing weather impacts with no moisture in the air, seeing the coal was extremely dry and was moving around.
Right, now you also tell us that on, I think it was the thirteenth or the fourteenth of February, you made a call that the fire should have a hazmat overlay as well. What does that mean in practice?
Well, it means there's a different set of procedures deployed, but it goes a little bit more fundamental than that. One of the concerns I had, we'd seen the level of C O, so carbon monoxide being produced in the mine to be at quite significant levels from spikes. Now, carbon monoxide is a product of incomplete combustion, so you'd expect it in a mine type fire. But in the mine, there was pockets that were holding quite tight. And we had a number of firefighters off-shift, we'd present to G P's and hospitals. None were hospitalized, but they needed to be tested. That told me, and speaking to senior command people, that we were treating, our firefighters were treating this in a structural type fire and not using hazardous materials type procedures. We need to emphasise to the firefighters, the hazardous materials type nature of this. That it was generating other things and just smoke and ash.
So the hazmat overlay has implications for the safety procedures for firefighters. And I'll stop you there because we're going to ask you to come back on Friday to address that subject in a discreet way. Now, in terms of the suppression attempt and the information that was provided to the community, did it have any implications?
Well, it does. If you've got carbon monoxide in around the mine and it's not being vented properly, what is being vented to the community? There's a limited, at that time, there was a limited number of detectors in and around Morel that could give, that were carbon monoxide detectors. And those that were being put in were fire service detection equipment. So we had some mobile devices to test outside the mine where the carbon monoxide was and what levels. On Saturday, there was some spikes of carbon monoxide that was detected in the community that prompted an emergency warning to be put out.
Yes, so the source of data, because at this stage, the E P A weren't monitoring carbon monoxide in the south of Morewell. The source of the data on the fifteenth was the CFA's iron carbon monoxide.
Yes, CFA or M F B. So they've got a joined up detection system, but the fire detectors were it. The reason I stop, I believe there is, well, the Morel police station has a carbon monoxide detector. So it's actually built into the police station. And I'm not sure at that time what E P A did have on the ground, so I'd have to check dates and times about what they did. But if it was, it would be mobile devices. Mobile devices are calibrated right. The issue I have with mobile devices though is, are they a network that consistently sit? Are we seeking the same level at ten metres high or three metres high from someone that's holding it? So the machinery's calibrated correctly and very appropriate to use. But to get a network of detectors, I believe that you need some other consistencies about height, distance between and so on, which obviously E P A have that responsibility to do. So we had preliminary information to provide us information about firefighter safety, which we normally do use at fires. And we're using some of that equipment to assess the type of atmosphere that was in the community, particularly in the southern part of Morel.
All right, and that information led to the warning that was issued using the emergency alert system on the fifteenth of February. And we'll deal with this a little later in the statement, we must skip forward to that on page twenty seven, paragraph one hundred and sixty two. So this was a decision that was made at the incident control centre level?
Yes.
To issue that emergency warning. And we will have some evidence from the deputy incident controllers who were in that incident control centre on that day. Can you tell us how the boundaries of the area that was warned by determined? Or is that something I should?
I can give you the principles, the exact boundary would be the deputy incident controller when he's in later in the week. But simply, what they look here is the area that's likely to be impacted, likely to be impacted. And they're able to use a electronic system to select that polygon. And therefore, once selected, every landline and mobile device in the area is then sent a message. That doesn't mean to say that someone outside that boundary won't get the message, but in the main, that's the boundary. Because mobile phones are a little bit interesting, how they work up towers. That area would have been, and the incident controller or deputy incident controller will explain, would have been the area that they saw as the likely place where the plume was and there would have been some readings in it. I know for a fact the highest readings were right on the Princess Highway in the southern part.
Yes.
Though some of it is precautionary and others is quite directive in the community sense.
The message that went out was using the text warning system. And the message was fairly curt, that people should shelter in place because of elevated carbon monoxide, to summarise it. And a few hours later, there was a downgrading of that message to advise people that they could move around outside again. That's a message that caused a degree of alarm in the community.
It caused a degree of alarm in a number of places, including with me.
Yes, well, perhaps you can explain?
And the reason for that is that again, as I explained before, I was concerned that we were overreacting to something that was preliminary information from some detectors, not a broad set of network of detectors, because they weren't there. When I say that though, an incident controller, if they see the need to put it out, we will support them in every way, shape or form. But we did have discussions at state level with the control team about what this meant. And what does it mean, would the Morel community understand what shelter in place meant? And to be as short of that when you've only got a hundred and forty or a hundred and sixty characters, what else does it mean? Because it will prompt you to want to find something else. It'll prompt you to try and understand why and what in detail. My concern is that we didn't have the necessary background information or support information for when that was sent to the community. Where would they go and look and what would they find? And also the types of building stock in Morel. Whether shelter in place is because there are well researched issues about shelter in place and the type of building. And that is the type of ventilation systems and type of structures they are. And obviously an older structure are not necessarily as, I should say, airtight, if that's the right word, as what a new design might be, adjusting designs and the capability of a building. So there's a number of questions that were drawn by this. This prompted a number of things to make sure the incident controllers had a set of triggers, both for dosage and exposure rates about what was needed there. And significant work was being done with E P A and health in a very quick period of time to come up with the right tools to support the controllers.
All right, so that was a protocol that was put in place after this message was sent out on the fifteenth. Was there any attempt to give those people who'd received the messages some further context or information about what the message meant?
We then move into, as I said before, in the community information, community information warnings is a field in its own right. And when I say that, we put firefighters and paramedics on the ground to meet people. They were around Morel, they were mobile in Morel, they had buses in Morel to start to better communicate and get information and awareness of all these things to a greater level. Again, does the community understand at technical level, question? Are they capable to understand some of the clinical and technical ways in which things are described? And also, we were using that people rightly firstly defer to a website. And I say rightly, well, we've probably proved wrong in that sense, in the sense that on a number of community people, community meetings, people were saying, I'm not connected to the internet. I don't get my information off a mobile phone. And we changed the strategy with a letterbox, with information in the letterbox was a critical part of the strategy. So I think some would say you got it wrong. I would say we learnt as we went about the information and the types of ways to engage with the Morel community.
Mr Lapsley, you're talking more about the evolution, the longer term evolution of the communication strategy. My particular question was whether after these text messages were sent out to people within that boundary, whether there was a specific attempt to give them some context within which they could understand the seriousness of that message.
No, I don't believe there was. Not in a comprehensive way.
Now, I was asking you about the hazmat overlay and what the practical effect of that was. Clearly a different paradigm for dealing with firefighter safety issues. And after the fifteenth, there were protocols in place for incident controllers to assess the carbon monoxide risk to the community.
So I'll take you back just quickly. The twelfth and thirteenth was very much focused on firefighter safety and things were changed on Friday the fourteenth. The events of the fifteenth, where you're talking about the emergency alert being used, put a greater emphasis over the next twenty four hours to change the triggers and the tools which were provided to the incident controllers about community information dealing with smoke and particularly carbon monoxide.
Was there any other practical consequence of the hazmat overlay?
Well, in a firefighter sense, it's all about procedure and safety. There was a whole other things about duration in the incident ground. We spoke to Suez, in particular their operations people, about what it meant to the workers in the mine. Because obviously they have the O H N S and duty of care responsibility for the mine workers. And making sure that those. And making sure that those procedures were shared and understood by Suez as well about their mine staff that were working in the area.
Now, I want to move to the suppression strategy that the fire services adopted. And I understand from your statement that this was a learning experience for everyone involved.
Yes. And when I say that, I think it was an evolving experience, that there was experiences or circumstances and scenarios run in front of us that we needed to be agile enough to be able to change the strategy to deal with it. And I might add, and this is not patting anyone on the back, but simply, one of the most important things that I saw was the expert panel, a group of externals to come in and they were coaching and supporting what was done to make sure incident controllers and the mine mine staff were understanding what was a very complex environment of safety, the geotechnical parts, the water balance system and how which were used by suppression activities.
Now, at what stage did you bring the expert panel in to provide that mentoring and external view?
On the sixteenth, Sunday the sixteenth, was the phone calls to the commissioner from Fire Rescue New South Wales out of Sydney. And later that day or earlier next morning, Wayne Hartley, the CEO of Queensland Mines and Rescue was contacted. And we sought advice from SDBI about an engineer, which was Tim Sullivan, that had, my understanding, twenty years or thereabouts, experience and understanding the stability and the geotechnical parts of the mine. They were the three primary people. They were in Mooreville on the Tuesday. I think the Monday night and Tuesday, definitely there on the Tuesday. They flew the mine, travelled the mine and then were able to talk us through what was suppression activity. The second part of that, a fellow by the name of Mark Cummings, who lives in Texas, United States, is a pioneer of compressed air foam. And compressed air foam in use of foam, not in grass and bushfires, which is where it's normally used. But compressed air foam in mines and I think also in black coal and brown coal, but certainly have an understanding of that. Mark was introduced to us through social media. We spoke to him a number of times in the early hours of the morning at his time. And we joined him up to be part of the second part of the expert panel. So he wasn't on the first bit, but he was on the second part to be able to advise us better about the use of and his learnings of what he championed in his career in coal mining.
Now, had compressed air foam been used to suppress a brown coal fire in Victoria previously?
Compressed air foam has been used in the open cuts previously. And when I say that, at a very limited amount. Compressed air foam in the CFA fleet and MFB fleet is not a standard configuration of their fleet. Hence, why it wasn't in Victoria. The learnings from the bushfires in Tasmania of two years ago, I think, two thousand and eleven bushfires in Tasmania. They had built and only commissioned six months ago, a large, very large compressed air foam capability in a truck. Never been used in Tasmania, was commissioned about six months ago, had been in Victoria when it was built, we'd seen it. We understood it was over there. And when we got to that weekend that our water, water as the weapon strategy was not working, we engaged with Tasmania and said, can this machine come over?
So this was the week?
This was the week end of the fifteenth. So when we saw the fire extension occur and that the water we'd been using during the week was not as successful as we would have hoped. And the fire intensity and size of the fire had increased. That's when we engaged that. That was also tested by the expert panel on that Monday, Tuesday. And they believed it was the appropriate thing. We'd also been trialling in another part of the mine, other foam products during that week to see whether foams would work in what is brown coal. Now, when I say it's used...
Just to get the answer to my question. Foam, compressed air foam had been used to fight a brown coal fire in Victoria previously?
Very limited.
Yes, in the two thousand and six, two thousand and eight fires?
I'd have to get some information. In the mid two thousand, there's a tanker called Main Ridge Tanker Two. So it lives on the Mornington Peninsula, had a trial CAFs machine on it. And it had been deployed into the valley for a previous fire. And I'm unsure if it was O six or an earlier fire, but there was CAFs in the valley in the mid two thousands.
CAFs being compressed air?
Air foam systems, but it was a very small capability, not a large capability. So it would not have had the throw and it was a testbed for CFA. And foam was not adopted, CAFs were not adopted inside CFA for other reasons than of operational reasons. So they weren't adopted.
So it hadn't previously been identified as as a resource that was necessary to respond to a large scale brown coal fire?
That's correct.
Will it be in your artillery in future?
In my recommendations, resource management and technology, including CAFs, is a way forward, a very important way forward. But needs to be...
That explains why it was necessary for that resource to be brought from Tasmania.
Tasmania. And the other secondary thing was there was CAFs brought out of ACT. And again, they built that as a result of the ACT fires in two thousand and three. So this cap was being built in a bushfire environment that could be used in coal, but not primarily for coal. It's interesting, in the paper that Tasmania put on the table about the justification of CAFs, they reference Mark Cummings, who was part of our expert panel, about the use of CAFs as a secondary issue in coal fires.
Now, I also wanted to ask you about the water supply within the mine. And I think we have a map of the mine that we can use for the purpose of you explaining to us what was in place and what was added during the firefight. So that's a diagram of the mine that has been provided to us by GDF Suez. Once again, I'm afraid you can't use the laser pointer, but if you are able to point out where there was water available for the firefighting effort and where there was a need identified for more.
Not to disappoint you, I'm actually the wrong one to show you, because I don't actually tactically know the lay of the pipes. What I can tell you, and I think it's very important, is that there was some reticulation water in and around the worked out parts of the mine. There was not an extensive lay of pipes nor sprinklers to cover that area. And obviously, that'll be discussed about what is the appropriate policy guidelines and regulatory requirements for that. What did happen in the initial stages was there was a need to either lay fire hoes or build infrastructure. And there are, I think in incident controller Bob Barry's thing, there's actually photographs of the type of infrastructure that was employed. So the mine actually laid at large diamber pipes and put additional pumps in. But there's some areas of the mine that did not have direct access to pipe work, did not have direct access to sprinklers. And that will be debated, obviously, about what's right and wrong in that area. However, when we say it's worked out, I think it's really important to understand it's worked out as production of coal. But it's still an area that people transverse every day because there's infrastructure in there as far as pumps and electrical assets. So it's not a, it's not a disused part of the mine, it's a worked out part that still has other parts that need to be protected and worked upon. And the minespeople would be in there on a regular basis. So in that sense, I think the best person, obviously Suez. And the other one is, I think John Haynes is one of the controllers, spent a lot of technical time or time in the technical areas to understand the reticulation area of the mine. And both those would be best to point on a map about which pipes and size of pipes. Because it's not just, it's not just the pipe, it's about volume and flow of pipes to get the right water.
All right. Thank you. Now, you put a performance monitoring process in place during what was a very long term firefight. Can you explain how that works and how you used it in the ongoing firefight?
First of all, we don't normally put a performance management system. It's not culturally or systematic in fire services to run a performance management system over the top of a fire. So this was new. It was risky in the sense that we were introducing a new management system over something of people that it was necessary. And the reason I say it was necessary, we needed daily to catch information of what was working and what wasn't working and what were the issues to deal with as we moved forward. So it was an internal reporting process that included the effectiveness of community engagement, success of water. There are, and I think Bob Barry and his evidence will show how they gridded the mine and put into small parcels to collect information about the amount of heat, the amount of fire, the amount of smoke and therefore the strategies that they were putting across it. And if it proved to be absolutely critical when you apply a system of work, where are you going to put foam first, where will you use aircraft, with the buckets that can drop large volumes in an area? Where could they get accessibility or not? And some areas where they could not get accessibility, that's just the type of big mine it is, it's a large area. So that was critical, but it was about continuous improvement and monitoring where we were going to make sure we were successful in doing that. One of the, some of the best products out of that was to show the reduction of heat in the wall by daily, using thermal cameras to see the reduction of heat in the mine and where it was moving and what was successful. And I'm into technical stuff now, but the height of the mine, you can do all your work, but the top bit could still burn and the ten metres underneath that you could have extinguished. If you don't get the lot, it will reignite. And I think that's something that people probably don't understand in the mine unless they've been part of the brown coal industry, this will reburn. Unlike a fire, normally if it's black, you black it out and that's it. This stuff does have the potential to reburn. So those complexities are there, hence why the performance management system was important. It wasn't welcomed by all, but it was an absolute critical step to understand the success and what the challenges were in that mine.
There's one last thing I want to ask you about the suppression effort, which is the digging out of Old Faithful, which was done right towards the end of the firefight. What is Old Faithful?
My understanding, and some of the Suez engineers might be best to talk about it, is an area of the mine in the northern batters that from time to time puts up a puff of smoke. So there's some heat under the ground somewhere. And when they do that, they either douse it or put clay. So it's an area. Whilst we had the gear there, it was discussed and I think in a media sense, we were very, we were poor in the way in which we described what it was because we didn't give any context to what it was. So people go, what's this thing that's been there for a number of years? What they did do though, whilst the gear was here, the big gear, particularly the aerial appliances and foam systems, was to take the clay cap off it and have a look to see whether there was something they could do with it. I wasn't there, so engineers from Suez and the firefighters would be best positioned in the fact that they took the clay cap off it, assessed it and put the clay cap back on and resealed it. Now, that to the Mooreville community, to many members of the Mooreville community is quite concerning that there's this unknown heat source in the northern batters of the northern wall. And I've been spoken to by a number of concerned residents about what does this mean? We haven't seen, to my knowledge, any smoke come out of it. The recapping of it is appropriate and the mines engineers were those that ran that operation and supported by fire. But I think it tells you that no matter what you do, there's always a potential of some heat source in these mines that will put a puff of smoke up from time to time.
All right. So Old Faithful was a pre-existing hotspot?
My understanding, it's not a product of this fire, it's been there for some years and I would say decades.
It had been clay capped?
It's been clay capped for many years and continued if it puts a puff of smoke up to be dealt with in that manner.
And it's in the northern batters of the mine, but I should ask someone else precisely where it is?
Someone will point exactly where it is.
All right. Now, in paragraph one hundred and thirty eight, or in paragraph one hundred and thirty eight of your statement, you identify a number of challenges that were encountered in suppressing the fire. Many of these that we have touched on in the course of what you've already said. But there are a couple that I'd like to draw out now. Water balance and stability and geotechnical issues, how did they impact on the suppression effort?
Well, it had a significant impact. Balanced water system is simply the amount of water you're putting in, the amount of water you're pumping out. And obviously, the mine itself generates water. So it's got water in the bottom of the mine that is pumped out of the Hazelwood Pondage on a regular basis. It's managed daily with the type of pumps that are there. And obviously, the amount of water you're putting onto the mine has the potential to jeopardise the stability of the mine. So the balanced water, and that's where Tim Sullivan on the expert panel was critical, to give us advice in a technical sense of the types of litreage, and I'm talking millions of litres of water that they're calculating to put in and put out. At one point in time, the strategy clearly changed that, and the reticulation system was modified to do this, to ensure that the water that is in the pondage in the bottom of the mine was being used for the suppression activity, that they weren't reducing more water. So that was important to get that working. That also brought on the health and safety issues about quality of water and how it was being used and sprayed around. So for every cause, there's a reaction. And the other thing about the geotechnical stability of the site is, I think everyone in Mooreville knows, I think probably most of Victoria understand that there is some issues with the northern batters in the fact that it's got infrastructure that sits on top of it with a drain and a roadway and power assets and it's close to the most southern back fence of Mooreville. And the reason I say that is that that was and has been an issue for the last number of years about the stability of the drain, which is obviously still being dealt between Latrobe City and Suez. And we were very mindful of that and we wanted to make sure that we understood not only the stability of it, but it's to do with safety. There was no way in hell that I could justify firefighters and equipment if it was in an unstable environment and we buried trucks or people in that, in that world.
So how did the concerns about stability translate to action? What difference did it make to the effort?
Daily, there was monitoring occur of both water and the stability. And daily, the incident managers or the incident controllers would meet with senior operational people from Suez. And I think that would be one o'clock every day or thereabouts, they'd meet at lunchtime and talk through the plan for the day, but also get feedback on the water and stability of the site. I, in my view, well managed, well understood, well built into the strategy, shared the relationship between Suez, operational people and incident controllers, had a very good, strong relationship, an open, honest relationship and talk about it in a confidential way to ensure that they understood the potential. And I must say that we didn't detect any major movement at all. There was some slippage of the mine, which you would expect. But there was no movement of any significance of the stability, particularly in the northern batters.
Now, the question that everyone wants to know the answer to is whether the fire is out.
Well, when we, on the thirty first day when we took it to under controlled and then on the forty fifth day when we took it to safe, the definition around, and I think I've got it in my witness statement somewhere, and the definition around safe is to say...
So we're looking at paragraphs one hundred and thirty nine, three to one hundred and forty one?
The incident controller of the day was Bob Barry. Bob documented to me with a document he signed off as the controller to use that statement there, which is one for one, about what safe means. When we say safe, the second part of that paragraph is important, that there will still be somewhere in that mine a hotspot. There will be a hotspot of some kind. It won't generate to be a fire, it'll be something that puts up a puff of smoke. It'll be detected, there's a hotspot and we need to deal with. And I think the mine are probably dealing with those every day of their lives about something that could be a heat source in the environment. We were very careful that we needed to give the confidence to the Mooreville community that it was out and make it move back to normal life. But also, we're very clear to say from time to time, you may see a puff of smoke, but it's not going to be a fire that sees us return to the conditions of mid February two thousand and fourteen.
So the answer to the question is not quite.
The answer to the question, I would say, is the fire is out. It's got some hotspots that need to be monitored.
You've given us an assessment in the next part of your statement under question thirteen about the things that worked well and the things that didn't work so well and the things that are in need of improvement. And there were a number of things that worked extremely well in the course of the firefight, not least being able to bring it under control in four to six weeks. And doing that without any significant injury to any of the people who were responding to the fire. I'd just like to ask you to elaborate on some of the points that you've you've listed in paragraph one hundred and forty four, in particular, the integration of the fire services and as between fire services and their integration with the mine operator.
I could summarise that a little bit more. You've got them there. If I summarise them into these couple of things, that there's some lessons learnt, clear lessons learnt, but there's also some opportunities. And in your introduction, talked about there's a new world. And in your introduction talked about, there's a new world. Take that out of this, out of, out of the game for a moment about a new world of emergency management, there's some very basic things. I, I think, and I've said before, that sewers, operational staff and the incident controllers and the divisional staff worked extremely well. And my observation is Trelgyn Fire Brigade, the Morewell Fire Brigade, Ylorn North Fire Brigade, supported by Mooyang Churchill and the other brigades actually have good relationships. Is it good enough for the risk? I think that's something we need to look at about what we're doing. In saying those things there, um, the s, some of the things that I was impressed with was adaptive management. That is, we challenged our incident controllers, it can be quite rigid. They're trained a certain way, operate, operate a certain way, and the fact I was bringing in some new things to say we have to do this, I mean adaptive management in the environment has to happen. And adaptive management also means that we need to listen to, um, what is a complex environment and get it better. But to do that in the future, and I'll give you some things that I think need to improve is integrated incident management. I think we've got integrated incident management between CFA, DEPI, um, those fire services and, and, and the emergency service agencies. What we need to do in the future is get integrated incident management with the industry. For them to wander in at one o'clock every day and do what they're doing and then wander off, and I say wander in the nicest way, um, I don't think, uh, the, the model of the future, we need integrated incident management because the industry actually have a lot of the answers. They actually know the place, so that's, that's what I'm saying about integration. Um, it's worked well, but yet we've got to take it the next step, so we've got a step, but there's a step yet further.
The picture that emerges from the evidence that is that during the response phase, there were quite separate incident control structures with a liaison point run by the fire services and the mine operator. Um, but we didn't have a situation where the mine personnel were integrated within the aim structure that the fire services were running.
That's correct, and, and that's, that's got to be the next step, that has to be something we take, whether it's a recommendation out of this inquiry or not, that's something that I've got to take forward. So that's there. Um, I think it goes a little bit broader then about, um, and I've got, uh, the Good Practice Guide. There's, uh, there's a need and I've led a, a, a small review of looking at the documentation that the, the mines use, not only Hazelwood, but Ylorn and Mooyang. Uh, and there's documents that are, are cited to me as being nineteen ninety-four and nineteen ninety-five policy guide documents. Uh, I say very clearly that, that's, that's not good enough, we need, we need the latest generation guides to help us understand what is the, the practice or policies of how the fire services in the mines work and who's part of that. Now, add to that an accountability model. I, I have trouble explaining what the regulators do, uh, and I say that nicely, that they're doing what they're meant to do, but they do it in silo. So where's the new accountability model that's clearly about regulators? What I'll call the referral authorities, so who has, who has expertise as a referral authority to offer up and support them.
And these are matters that we'll return to in the final week of the year.
But, but I think they are actually part of what we're actually asking now, we've seen improvement and I can talk about the improvements and the opportunities in some of those there. But they're actually part of the next step and we haven't got the solution in what I described there in totality. So I think they're there and, you know, you know, clearly the community, the community has to be involved more before, during and after these events. And as I said before, we've got to understand what is the consequence of these, it's not just dealing with coal and fire, it's actually dealing with fire and coal that produces smoke and ash and other things that we actually build into the plans and the plans from the start are about consequences. So I, I think they're there, um, and probably the last one, when I say about planning, integrated planning between municipal plans, uh, private plans, including the mines operators, so we look at a landscape. We don't look at, um, what is the mine under the regulations, OHS regulations of two thousand and seven, separate from that of the municipal, um, fire management plan. We need a landscape of view across what are the plans and therefore you deal with hazard risk and consequence in a better way. So I, I think some of those there are what we saw as an opportunity, we did get an agile management, I was pleased we got it. How do we take those opportunities? So they're, they're good outcomes. How do we take them and put them in a systematic approach to the future is the critical part.
Now, there's one other, um, aspect of, you know, the what worked well that I want to explore with you and it's on the next page of your statement. Um, at point eight, you identify the use of local knowledge. And then at point ten, you refer to the appointment of the expert panel,
Yep.
um, from New South Wales, Queensland and Texas, as well as a Victorian mine safety engineer. Um, there has been some disquiet locally that expertise that was built up over decades working for the S E C was not utilised by fire services in any formal way.
Um, that, that's a fair comment by the community, a very fair comment, because there is lots of expertise and lots of ownership of, of many, many people that live in Morewell or the valley that understand, um, brown coal. And in particular, they've got a very emotional attachment to it. Um, I, I think without having a model that shows proper engagement before, during and after, it's very hard sometimes to bring them in in the middle of it. And although I spoke to, um, in particular one, uh, who will be witnessing this, uh, in this inquiry at some point in time about understanding the past, we've also got to make sure they're current. And I think that's one of the challenges, that we've got to pick up what is, um, someone's view and understanding in today's context. And I, I found that difficult, in, in one point, I actually had one of these ex, um, senior oper, operations people from what would have been the S E C and the early parts of privatisation, um, into the mine and actually saw the mine, uh, hadn't seen it for over a decade. Um, and we used that person to actually give us an understanding of what was happening. Um, I've got to say that,
Is that Mr Brown, your reference?
That's, that's Mr Brown, yes, so Bill Brown. Uh, that wasn't necessarily welcomed by some of the current employees of sewers, that they saw, they had the responsibility to manage the current event and they saw someone else that had previous history making comment. I, I, I'm past that, I, I needed the, the advice, um, to get the best result, so we were using the people that had knowledge of it and we've got to respect those that have got, um, uh, history and knowledge and bring that forward. The lesson out of this though is to engage with them in, as I said, proper committee engagement before, during and after. Committee engagement that means something and it's not just this thing you turn on when you've got a problem, you've got to actually understand it. So I think it's a little bit broader than that, but I think the Morewell community is rich of information. Um, but we haven't had a system to engage in an effective way. And when I say we, I say the royal we, it's the broad we of the industry and the emergency services, local government. Uh, and local government's critical to that, so, so there's a, there's something missing to be effective in that area. Um, but yet we did talk to some, but not all, I, I know there's other people who'd love to have spoken to me and I never got to them just in time, but there was some that we spent, um, some time with to understand the history and the knowledge of what was occurring.
Now, I also need to ask you about the things that, uh, you've identified that were in need of improvement. Um, now the first one, I think we can leave to Friday, health monitoring of firefighting personnel. Um, deployment of equipment, equipment and personnel to the mine fire could have been more expeditious. Could you expand on what you mean by that please?
Um, again, we talked about the CAPS machine, uh, you know, we were, we were on our fourth, fifth day before we saw the absolute need for that level of, um, I'd, I'd say technology, but in some respects, it's, it's known, phones have been around firefighting for years, so. Uh, we also had the deployment of aerial appliances that were coming from, uh, the metropolitan area, so Melbourne, Melbourne as in Metropolitan Fire Brigade and also CFA. But, um, aerial appliances out of Warrnambool and, uh, and Mildura, so these are a large. Now, um, there is no plan for those vehicles to come to the valley. The plan normally is for vehicles from Scoresby and Dandenong to come to the valley, it's built in the plans. The plans were not extended past, which meant intervention at our level. Um, so you could see that resource management, um, could be done and even on the ground, the resource management issue. So on the ground efficiencies of running a big fire ground, um, was challenging sometimes to get two hundred people on a shift deployed effectively into, in some cases, the first time they'd been in the mine, so that entry, um, the first entry point, there's efficiencies in the system that I think, uh, evolved uh, over time and were better, but resource management, when you've got large resources, is always a challenge to get the efficiency out of it. And that includes the mines workers as well to be built into that system.
I want to move to the area of communications.
Yes.
Um, what you deal with in the next section of your statement. What I understand from what you have told us in that section of your statement is that as the incident became more complex, so did the communications need and the strategy that accompanied that need.
Um, most certainly. Uh, one, one comment, um, that's worth credit carding this, we've changed dramatically the way in which we see emergency or fire information to the community as a result of the O nine fires. One of our challenges though is the O nine fires was predicated on large bushfires and we've built a system to apply it into other types of emergencies. Uh, a factory fire, a house fire, hazards of materials they are using, the services are using very effectively, um, that system. However, I, I, I draw, uh, a word you used before, shelter in place. Do people understand shelter in place? So the words we're using, have we educated the community in an appropriate way to understand our terminology? And some would say yes and others would say no. So we were using systems, um, and it wasn't until the second week that health started to use our advice messages, the fire-related advice messages to, to better communicate to the community. So, so there's some lessons there about what is traditionally fire-type messaging that's been overlaid by environmental or health-type messaging. And I think the integration of those, um, was one of those things that evolved. And it got better, um, but by that time had we had a, we did have a frustrated community that were too much, not enough. And what are you telling me? I'm now confused in some instances, so, so the level of information, the targeting of the information, the relevance of the information and how people access it and are supported with it is all part of the system. And some of it has to be face to face.
Now, there was a statewide communications and stakeholder engagement strategy developed. Um, was that developed, um, following the angry community meeting on the eighteenth of February?
Um, I, I'm not sure of the exact date, it was, I chaired the state emergency management team and every day we met, if not twice a day. Um, the emergency management joint public information committee, so MJPIC is what it's known as, uh, are represented on that. And every day we would talk about, it's a standard, it's a standard agenda item. So it doesn't bring, it's a standard item, what does MJPIC need from the senior people, uh, and what are they giving us? They were meeting, uh, daily, if not twice a day. Uh, MJPIC is very good at getting connection, um, about, you know, it's time for Rosemary as the chief of office and I to be together, ambulance, Victoria, whoever, so it's probably got the doing bit. The strategy bit, um, was there, but I think you would be right in saying it's around about that second week where it gets any structure of significance around the strategy.
Right, and, and it was MJPIC and if, if there's a person, the chair of MJPIC who, who led the development of that strategy?
It's a responsibility of the chair, um, there are other players obviously that are critical and obviously health is critical, EPA is critical, my office is critical. Um, to make sure that those comms, um, people actually understand it and drive it. Um, but it is the MJPIC chair that is the person.
We'll be hearing from her next week. Um, what I'd like to ask you specifically is about the role that the fire services took in implementing that strategy. Um, because there was some quite innovative means of engaging with the community and getting the message.
Yeah, but, um, the input to the strategy was driven, um, by a number of people, one, one group were actually based in Trelgyn. So they're part of the regional, um, controls in Trelgyn. And, uh, and the regional controllers, uh, were key to it, so how to, how to engage with the business, how to engage with education, particularly principles, how to, um, create a community reference group was driven from Trelgyn but bolted into the one strategy. Um, so it wasn't a single person, it was a number of people that had opinions. Now, without dwelling on this, the term community development, the community, the term community engagement, the term community awareness or community information are all different disciplines, well, some of them aren't disciplines, but if you're a community development person, you see it quite differently, how to engage. And there was that need to bring that together and in particular the Latrobe City Council. And the Latrobe City Council has a community development officer, it's well and truly, um, developed in the area of understanding the Morewell community. So how do you connect that to get the local understanding of current systems? And I say you use the current networks that are there and sometimes I would say that they're trusted networks, that is, who are the trusted leaders in the community that lead groups of people that have influence and speak with authority and they are important to engage with? And we did do that, uh, but it wasn't in the first week, it, it was certainly a post-second week issue about how to in, 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 um, engage with the community. And I think, to me, the turning point was the committee meeting of the O nine. The amount of anger that was in that committee, we had to do it different.
All right, the trusted community networks that you engaged with, we, we'll have an example of that later this week, um, from the coordinator of the neighbourhood house.
Excellent.
Who, um, helped to use the neighbourhood house as a means of getting information into the community, were there others?
Um, well, the principals of the schools, particularly the, the three principals, um, that the schools were relocated, were critical.
You mentioned the council.
The council, uh, the business group themselves, we actually had a bris, uh, a, a breakfast for all the business leaders in town and Ken Lay as the chief commissioner on police and I chaired that. Um, I think that was a turning point in the sense that the business leaders of Morewell, um, are really important in mo, in all aspects, not on, not only about economics, but it's about connection to who, who in, who they employ, but who comes through the front door of their businesses. And, uh, you know, if you're the news agent, agent, or you're the owner of the news agent, um, how many people come through the door every day? And I know for a fact, he did not necessarily have the information that he was comfortable with, let alone how he would engage with his, the people that come through to buy the paper or the tashlotto ticket. And I think that was a very important point when someone like that in the, in the, in the, uh, in the community stops and says, Craig, you got it wrong, uh, we were able to change that, um, fairly quickly and get engagement. Um, it may have been a little bit too late for the expression that, uh, that he was putting forward, but nevertheless, um, they're important and they're the opportunities of the future too, they are the ones that we've got actually crystallised, not only for Morewell but for Victoria.
Now, there's one last thing I'd like to ask you about today, which are the lessons learned from communications and you've listed these at paragraph one hundred and seventy-three to one hundred and seventy-two. So the things that worked well, that didn't work well and, uh, room for future improvement. Um, you've touched on the people-to-person contact already and the use of, uh, trusted networks as a way of getting information out to the community. Um, can I ask you, more for the sake of time than from a desire to be critical to focus on paragraph one hundred and seventy-two and the,
Yep.
what could have been done better? Messaging content. Um, is that directed in part at the message that went out on the fifteenth of February?
Uh, yes.
For shelter in place?
Yes, um, y, yes, but it's a bit broader than that because I think we, if you read the messaging, it's, it's got fire messaging and then they'll have a line about health. And although they didn't, they weren't in conflict, I think there may have been a better way that we learn from this of how we do communicating messaging. Um, and I think that also tells us that we, we are quick to be quite fire-centric. So fire-centric, not health-centric, which tells you about have we got the consequence at the front of our, our people, we've trained to do these jobs, so that's important. Uh, so messaging content's there, um, and I think, and EPA are the best to speak about it, I think EPA is very good at providing technical data about what's it mean. Um, and I, I, yeah, so some of those things, when you look at the information, is it technically bound and therefore you're relying on the interpretation of a community member? Or is it put in a set of words that people can read and understand clearly? So it's about the communications of the content. Um, the messaging style, again, I said before that, you know, we default very quickly to, um, websites and think by publishing a, a W W W address that everyone will go there, well, it's not the case. And I think we're too quick to default to websites, although they're important. Um, and if we are going to default, default to websites or the internet, using places like the neighbourhood house is a, is a, is a classic example, that, that's where people go to get information and they go there sometimes to access the information or be supported on how to use that information. So those other networks might be, go to the neighbourhood house because the information will be there, it might be electronic, but they'll be, you'll be supported in how you access and use it. Um, and there's no doubt the connection to the community, as I said before, you, you know, if we think that we're going to continue to engage only when the fire is in the sky, um, well, that's not the right model, it's got to be a, a model that is broader than that about how we connect. And I say, uh, and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to put this in place one day, is that it's not, um, local government's responsibility or the fire service, it's got to be broader than that, it's got to be across. The connection has got to use the networks of their, how to ga, engage. And if you think about the, the primary care, um, partnerships that are set up by health, they engage with communities. We be, we should be using them as much as we use the neighbourhood house or the road tributary or whoever, so we've got to be better at our connection. Now, I'm not allowed to go back to one seventy, but one point of one seventy at one seventy point two if I may. Um, people-to-person contact is really important. Because some people need to actually have that discussion. And just giving them information isn't alone, so how we do that, we should never ever forget the people contact, the face, um, the ability to have the discussion, it's a two-way discussion and it's really important. So it doesn't matter what we do, in times of crisis, you need face-to-face engagement.
That's a good point to stop.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to ask you back on Friday, um, from my point of view, uh, we'll ask you back on Friday and we'll ask you back again in the last week. Um, it's Neil. It's nearly one o'clock. Perhaps we could ask now if the board members have any questions? And then I believe that Mr Riordan for GDF Suez has some questions for you after lunch.
Okay. Commissioner John Cattrell, who you had before, thanks very much for your contribution. Which was very helpful. Could I just return to this issue about the communication strategy? The way your report reads is that it really took until the 20th of February or even later before it was agreed, and that's at least a week after the fire and even your own statement that it was a hazmat fire that could burn for a month. So why did it take so long to develop the strategy?
The first week with the normal communications, and particularly underpinned by Bushfire Communications, was deployed. And I think there was thought processes going on behind, but it was very much empowering the local controllers to use their public information offices, their information section to develop it. It was quite clear, and I think the turning point, I've said it before, but I'll say it again, John, the 14th and 15th is the turning point of this incident, and in a communication since the 18th, when the committee showed so much concern about their health and wellbeing and understanding what this incident really meant. It wasn't as if there wasn't a strategy there, I think the elements of it were there, but it wasn't documented together and then obviously put out and published on, you were saying the 20th, but about the, it's somewhere in that week after the 18th. The other thing that happened in there was, I think, we saw a different engagement than, you know, as I've just finished off saying, that our traditional ways of communicating through the electronic means was not working. We weren't getting the coverage or the penetration into a community of need, and it's broader than Morwalt, because there was, you know, there's interest outside Morwalt, Churchill, Ylorn North, others that needed to get this information. So the strategy was important to do. We don't always put that level of strategy in over top of incidents. If we did, you know, you think of the numbers we've just talked about earlier on, if we had 78 incidents and we left that level of support, we leave it very much at incident control level and regional control to support it. We then reached in from state level to give very strong leadership, very strong leadership about where this incident was going. And the structures, as was indicated before, also changed at that point in time about how we had accountabilities. And even the Morwalt community would have seen that Rosemary and I, or the chief health officer and I, and even the CEO of EPA were here on a very regular basis to give consistency and a level of authority. Now, in saying that, I've also been challenged by other communities in the state of Victoria. Why did I give so much attention to Morwalt and not to East Gipsland or the Mally or the Grand Pines or the fires in the other metropolitan area? And my answer to that is those fires in the main were contained, this fire had overlay of complexity of significance. And I think to show credit to the Morwalt community, we were and did have our eyes focused well and truly on the ball about Morwalt. So the strategy itself was late, but I think it was the evolutionary steps, if that's what I say, late, you know, 11 days in from when the incidents start, I think there's logic about the evolution of the incident that gets us there.
You seem as though you're surprised by the community reaction on the 18th of February.
I don't think I'm surprised. I think the, well, you might say surprised, the level of concern was very concerned, very concerned.
And do you think that was misguided?
No, 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 I don't, the Morwalt community, no, no, I would never say a community is misguided when it comes to an emergency. You need to listen to the levels of anxiety and understand what it is and unpack it, because there's something that's driving it. And I think, you know, we did that. I think there's a lot of people probably don't understand the extent of what we did that, because we've never probably had the chance to communicate it. But I in particular took a lot of interest in what the Morwalt community actually is made up of there. Who are they? Where do they come? Where's the history? Where's the ownership? What I talked about before, there's a huge ownership of brown coal and the mining industry in this community that is very deep. And it's also fair to say that there's a very deep emotional scar in this community about what those mines are today and what they were when the SEC had them. And we can't turn the clock back about what the state electricity commission was in those days. What we do have to do is be able to manage in the best way to have an integrated approach to the future. And part of that is a communication strategy since before the event.
In paragraph 168, you list a set of principles for the strategy. Is my understanding that at that point then, all the agencies would be seeking to achieve those principles?
Yes. One of the things that the state of emergency management team, the regional emergency management team, and the incidentistic get of principles have joined up. I'm very pleased to say that our incident controllers and regional controllers do sponsor a joined-up approach. And we use a term, we work as one, a very simple term, but it's a very effective term. And I'm sure there'll be an example that someone will say to me that they weren't working together. We have moved the paradigm significantly different in the last three or four years about how these agencies do work together. And on the same token, there's a set of principles, but I've also said that some of our messaging and content wasn't as joined. And if we did end up there being joined, how do we keep that as a sustainable way of working is, I think, the challenge out of this event in what you present as an inquiry and what we know as internal processes and things to fix. So although I say there's a set of principles people work to, they do, but we've got to make sure we overlay it with strong leadership management systems and give the skill sets and the supporting tools to make it work in a sustainable way.
So for instance, if you know it, tell the community, that was a principle, clearly that all the agencies agreed that they would follow through on?
That was a principle we've got to honour.
Yes. Just one final point. In paragraph 150, you draw reference to the notion of one source, one message. Do you think that's something we should be thinking about for the future in terms of coordinating all the public communications under one source?
Yes, it is, it is. And when I say that, again, one source, one message has been driven from the O9 fires, so it's had a very strong fire overlay, easy to adopt in other hazards, particularly in the natural hazards, a flood, storm. What I do need to understand a little bit better is how it would be in an emergency for human health or animal health, but the principle's solid. It's about then the application of what it means. And the reason I say that is, a pandemic is different than a flood or a fire. You've got something that's geographically based, and a pandemic can actually move in a community societal sense quite differently, and you would know that. So we've got to be careful we're not applying systems that don't match the type of complexity that we're trying to fix. So a principle, absolutely, but I think we'd have to take some strong advice by health and agriculture about what it might mean in a human or a animal health emergency.
Certainly earlier on in your statement, you do refer to sort of three separate information, public information teams, and indeed your concerns about what we could do better implies an element of confusion or disconnection in terms of the public messaging.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think it is right. And we always will be challenged about how multiple agency put information up on their websites or what they publish to ensure that it is consistently in a timely way. That's something which is about a quality assurance system, but it's also about making sure we all see the same common view of the incident, and therefore our communications is consistent. So the common operating picture scenario is something that's really important. Shared understanding of the scenario leads to better management strategies but better communication strategies.
So just finally, so do you think there should be for the future a different governance approach in terms of public communication?
We would be foolish not to review our current governance approaches to public information. And if the review was to confirm the bits that worked well, that's fine, but it is a time to look at the way in which the governance works around it, which means you've also got the ownership contribution and ultimately the content.
And clearly, your new agency potentially has
Yes.
a great role to play there.
So we've got an opportunity ahead of us, but we still need it to be clearly articulated that that is the opportunity we should pursue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's two o'clock, I was tracking.